Buenos dias.
Good morning. Please have a seat. Within the framework of the extraordinary meeting of ECOSOC on the future of our work under the Chair of Paola Narváez, who presides this Economic and Social Council, we would like to begin with a special session to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean, created on the 25th of February 1948 by this Economic and Social Council. I am very pleased to offer the floor to José Manuel Salazar, Executive Secretary of ECLAC. Thank you very much, good morning, everyone. Dear Alberto van Claveren, who is not with us here yet, but maybe he will arrive soon, dear Ambassador Paola Narváez, President of the Economic and Social Council, dear Mr. Alejandro Solano, Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs of Costa Rica, dear Ambassador Furie, dear representatives of ECOSOC member countries and of ECLAC, colleagues of the UN system, dear friends all. I am very fortunate, together with all my ECLAC colleagues, to be able to celebrate together with you the 75th anniversary of this Economic Commission. Within the context of this ECOSOC meeting, as you well know, the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean was established on the 25th of February 1948 via Resolution 106, six of the sixth period of sessions of ECOSOC. The idea came from Dr. Inan Santa Cruz, a lawyer and Chilean diplomat, who at that time acted as Chilean ambassador to the UN and who with a tremendous vision of the future presented and successfully negotiated a resolution in order to create an Economic Commission for Latin America. Thus, ECLAC was born in order to collaborate with Latin American governments in the economic development of their countries in terms of the improvement of the quality of lives of their people and in the expansion and strengthening of trade relations, both outside, both within and outside our region. Last November, we had the honour of receiving on this room the General Secretary Antonio Gutiérrez, who on that occasion highlighted the trajectory and importance of ECLAC because of its historical role of intellectual leadership and a fundamental reference point for reflecting in terms of development and in articulating sustainable development policies for the region. I would now like to devote a few minutes to review some of the milestones of the thinking of ECLAC during these seven decades that I believe is something timely and valuable on this occasion. At the beginning and in the decade of the 50s, ECLAC promoted the Latin American development via industrialization policies implemented by the state as the most efficient way to achieve the dissemination of technical progress within a framework of trade between the center in inverted commas, as it was known during those decades, and the periphery in inverted commas of the world economic system. And the industrialization of several countries of the region became a practice before it became a policy, and it was a policy before it became a theory. ECLAC, what it did was to strengthen the policy and to develop the theory. The emphasis on industrialization was justified because of its unique characteristics, at least during those years, in order to promote the adaptation of technology and the dissemination of technical progress and also to increase productivity and its appropriation by developing countries. In the 70s, the message in favor of industrialization was incorporated, was on top of that message, we incorporated an additional component, the proposal to implement institutional reforms, agrarian reforms, fiscal and financial reforms, among others, that were regarded as fundamental in order to enable the continuity and the greater depth of industrial development. But during that decade, ECLAC also put forward certain criticisms to industrialization because of its substitution of imports, as it was evolving and emphasized the importance of the promotion of manufactured industrial exports, and it also worked at length on two other phenomena, high inflation and the restriction or external imbalance for development. This is also the decade when ECLAC contributed strongly to the influential theory of dependence that developed its even greater influence at a world level during the 70s. During the 70s, the thinking of ECLAC advanced around two fundamental lines, the nature and difficulties of economic growth and industrial development and the distribution and income distribution. This and other ideas became a comprehensive theory on the characteristics and challenges of peripheral capitalism, a concept that was put forward by ECLAC. We also assisted on the concept of a dynamic insufficiency of peripheral capitalism in order to grow and create jobs. In addition, during this decade, there was a more explicit development of the structural historical method as a way of creating theory based on the realities with an explicit analytical scheme. And finally, criticisms and self-criticism were put forward that distance ECLAC, at least from certain versions of the theory of dependence, and analyze the changes and opportunities in what was called transnational capitalism. The profound economic and social crisis suffered by most of the countries of the region during the 80s led the then Executive Secretary of ECLAC, Norberto González, to baptize those years as the lost decade. During that decade, ECLAC worked on the analysis of the debt crisis and the ways in which that could be negotiated in proposals for a more efficient and less expensive macroeconomic adjustment, more capable of promoting growth, and also on mitigation, on policies to mitigate the social costs of that adjustment. We also discussed in greater depth the analysis of the exporting industrialization of Southeast Asia and lessons for the industrialization of Latin America and the Caribbean. In the 90s, we saw the appearance of neo-structuralism as a thinking current in ECLAC that sought to modernize the thinking of ECLAC, to adapt it to the changes of that decade and to make it much more visible. Within that new context in which countries embraced the idea of trade and financial globalization, a period that now many call hyper-globalization, ECLAC insisted upon the fact that the guiding line should be a providing transformation with equality, which is the title of one of the most iconic publications of ECLAC, ensuring a productive, wide-ranging transformation catering for the negative impacts that globalization could imply, and with an approach on the development of competitiveness within a framework of open regionalism. Part of the focus was how to reform the reforms, and I'm sure that many in this room remember that, how to reform the reforms of the so-called Washington consensus in those years. During the first decade of the 21st century, neo-structuralism was articulated around four major areas, macroeconomics and finances, with an emphasis on counter cyclical policies, international trade, social development, and environmental sustainability, something that appeared with enormous strength, issues that were tackled or that were dealt with in various influential publications. The idea was a heterodox vision in macroeconomic and development-based matters in terms of the allocation of resources and the intervention of the state, universalistic in the social field and conservationist in environmental terms. ECLAC summoned or called upon a balance between the asymmetries of globalization to achieve development based on productive transformation, distributive equality, and protection and social cohesion. In the decade of 2010, despite the fact that the concern for equality had been historically present in the thinking of ECLAC, it gained greater focus during this decade, expressed and founded on a set of documents known as the Trilogy of Equality, and the main ideas of ECLAC during this decade was to promote sustainable development via a progressive structural change, a great environmental development and agreements for equality based on the 2030 agenda. The issues of gender equality and the society of care also were also a priority. The change to the present decade was dominated by the crisis in Cascades that has impacted the region and the world, and also, as from the pandemic in 2020, these shocks have focused our attention on the analysis of the impacts in this crisis in Cascade and in the dialogue between governments and other key stakeholders on how to manage its effects, the effects of this crisis of shocks. We are also concerned with the analysis of changes in globalization, geopolitics, technological revolution, climate change, and migration, among other issues. As from the viewpoint of the challenges for development and with a medium and long-term perspective, our present diagnosis is that the region finds itself in a true development crisis, as we have expressed, which is evidenced in three traps or main syndromes. So, one low-growth trap between 2014 and 2023, the region growth grew only at a rate of 0.8% on average, which is less than half of the 2%, which was the rate at which it grew during the lost decade of the 80s. Our message or recommendation in this sense is that it is urgent for countries to escalate efforts in terms of growth and especially in terms of productive development policies. Secondly, a high inequality trap aggravated by at least six fundamental root causes, low growth, education weaknesses and professional training weaknesses. And Jeffrey Sachs spoke about this yesterday, low dynamic, weak job creation, regressive taxation systems, and social policies with important weaknesses in addition to the major inequalities that still exist in terms of gender. Our recommendation then is that it is also urgent for countries to have a comprehensive vision of these root causes of inequality and of the low mobility and social inclusion, and to act in a comprehensive manner on all those levers, on all those areas that can mutually reinforce each other. And thirdly, a low institutional capacity trap and of complex and weak governance in order to face up to the magnitude of the development challenges that characterizes our region. We have insisted on the fact that it is not enough to establish a diagnosis or to point out what has to be done, but rather to focus on the house, and we are systematically working on how to improve the governance of public policies, on how to improve what we call the TOPP capacities of institutions, technical, operational policies, and prospective capabilities, as well as on issues related to financing. In summary, the major challenge of countries in the region in terms of development today is how, as from today, we can advance towards a construction of a more productive, inclusive, and sustainable future. The three objectives and areas of work that we include in our slogan for the 75th anniversary, and how to do this under the new geo-economic and world geopolitical conditions. In this construction, we have identified 11 major transformations of the development model, as well as a list of promoting or dynamizing sectors in order to achieve a greater growth, more sustainable, inclusive, and sustainable, and we are seriously dealing with these issues. This is not just a list or a metaphor. Each one of those characteristics has a consequence upon the development pattern and consequences upon the types of policies that countries need to establish and also to consolidate the advance towards sustainable development areas that can be the subject of investment, alliances, and international cooperation with regards to 2030 agenda. We're closely, we're working closely with the whole UN system at a regional level in the regional cooperation platform known as RCP LAC, the Regional Cooperation Platform, and at a national level, supporting resident coordinators and country teams. In order to conclude, I assure you that in these 75 years of history and contributions by ECLAC that I have summarized, we're inspired every day, both me and my colleagues, to work hard and strategically to support countries for the construction of a future that is more productive, inclusive, and sustainable. But above all, we are conscious and we do not ever forget that we obtain the support of the agentic, of the work of giants, beginning with Ambassador Inan Santa Cruz and continuing with Raúl Prevej, a long list of leaders, of ideas, and of action, and of committed teams of officials sharing their same illusions and convictions in terms of the transformation of our development models in peace and democracy. Thank you very much. We'd like to thank the Executive Secretary for his words, and now the Ambassador Paola Narváez has the floor. Thank you very much, Luis, Mr. Secretary Executive of ECLAC, Mr. Salazar, the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Costa Rica, Mr. Solano, the Ambassador of the Argentine Republic, Jorge Fabri, and distinguished ambassadors, authorities, national authorities, delegates, and dear colleagues, special guests, ladies and gentlemen. Please let me start out by giving you a good welcome to everyone, everyone participating in the second session of discussion. It's a great pleasure for us to have you here in Chile for this special meeting of ECOSOC, which would not be possible without the generous offering of ECLAC, of the Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean, that is hosting us, receiving us in these premises during two days. And therefore, we'd like to take a few minutes to commemorate the 75th anniversary, which is a token of appreciation, José Manuel. As it was pointed out by one of the key speakers yesterday, the history is showing that innovation, the significant innovation, most of the time has been the fruit of significant challenges. The creation of ECLAC is one of these perfect examples. Back in 1947, as was said before, Ambassador Inan Santa Cruz, the permanent representative of Chile to the United Nations, observed the social and economic crisis taking place in Latin America, and facing this, he thought of creating an institution to reinforce the economic ties between the countries of the region and beyond that context. He was very convinced to comply with this, and after many diplomatic endeavors and showing his leading thought, in 1948, it was held the first session, one of many that has been held in Santiago, Chile. Since then, ECLAC has been a fundamental pillar to support the countries of Latin America and the Caribbean for the development of public policies, the support, advice, in training, cooperation, economic and political. And ECLAC has become therefore an comparable partner for the materialization of our development priorities. When I see the challenge that we have vis-à-vis the present challenges, including the growth of poverty, the climate change and natural disasters, the food insecurity, and the political instability, we should remember that we have to create the changes during the crisis, as Mr. Santa Cruz said. We should be convinced, and he was back in that time, to move towards the materialization of the SDGs. We need conviction and ambition, because less than this will not be enough to create illicit, the changes that are required by our peoples and the planet, and his memory should be a catalyzer for action, although the endeavor is not easy. In other words, we should especially consider this when it's not easy. As a President of ECOSOC, one of my priorities has been to drive these transforming elements, and the aisles of ECLAC should be an inspiration to be convinced that change is possible in times of crisis. In 1947, he was a diplomatic that was sure about this need to create this new mechanism for regional cooperation, but tomorrow we could have a youngster who would be convinced to improve the food security, or a woman from a rural setting to improve their conditions, and all of these ideas should be supported and magnified. ECOSOC is here with ye to make this come true. While celebrating the 75th anniversary of ECLAC, I would like to thank the Secretary Executive for his support and wavering support to hold this session and all the team that has made our experience very pleasant, I would like to thank you, José Manuel, you personally and the whole team and all the workers from ECLAC, and I would like to convey fraternal greeting for the success. I would like to greet the colleagues from ECOSOC and also to bring their activities outside of New York to involve the responsible parties for the formulation of policies at the regional, national, and international level. I should also remind you the important work that this council will have in the next coming months, including holding events as the forum for the young people, for the development, the high-level political forum, a very important and very important processes that we have underway in the United Nations as the preparation for the future summit and the proposal of Worldwide Summit. We expect to continue the cooperation with ECLAC and the different commissions during this process so that this work and the political orientation reflects the reality of different regions. And our efforts of collaboration could inspire more changes and fostering a legacy that will go beyond the frontiers and benefiting the whole mankind, because that is the spirit of the United Nations. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. And now the Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs, Mister Solano, from Costa Rica has the floor. Good morning, Madam, Mrs. Paula Narváez, the permanent representative of Chile to the United Nations, Mister Salazar, the Executive Secretary of ECLAC and the Argentine Ambassador. Excellencies, ambassadors and the representatives of the different countries to the United Nations. On behalf of the government of the government of Costa Rica, it's an honor for me to participate in this anniversary number 75 of ECLAC. And the reason is to collaborate with the regions of the region for the development and improving also the conditions of life of the citizens and also reinforcing the economic relationships among the countries and their ties with the world. This is the right moment to think about the achievements that have been gained during these years. The ECLAC is guiding light for these historical challenges during the 75 years. Through the study of the conditions has been vital to better understand and to face the challenges that our countries have. This anniversary finds us in a very difficult situation. The pandemic of COVID-19 showed the different structural gaps that we have, inequality, poverty, the weakness of the social protection, the low productivity, the financial exclusion, the technological gap and the inequality of gender. And the asymmetries and the incapacity to respond to these challenges has increased this crisis. And the region has to face other vulnerability as a result of the human pressure on ecosystems, as though coming from the climate change, the loss of biodiversity and pollution. However, we cannot yield at any rate. And today, more than ever, we should keep our commitment to move towards this development with equality, that is inclusive, resilient. And that is the approach that has been the focus of our attention at ECLAC, even in times of war and conflicts and with all the problems it involves. So we have to take care of the migratory flows, the climate change, the scourge of the organized crimes and also other factors. We shouldn't forget the centrality of this global discussion. We need to create the social agreements that will favor all of this. And we also have other cascade crises that are in our region for the production systems. And let us envisage some transforming changes in order to have the inclusive and sustainable development. We have more digitalization, we create more capacities for the people and more added value in the production in order to face successfully this transition for the sustainable energy process. And ECLAC has shown is able to provide the technical support based on science and giving the guidelines, toolbox to create the public policies in this new stage. And in order to commit the or to materialize all of these commitments, we have the cooperation of all countries and the support of the secretariat so that they can pay attention of these vulnerabilities in each one of the countries from a narrative of progress, a narrative of progressive change. And Costa Rica, from the vice presidents today, considers also that the commission provides us space for political discussion, which is privileged and is part of the United Nations, which is inclusive and lets all of our countries participate, as well as the associated territories that are complemented with the membership of other countries outside of the region and intra-regional mechanisms that are partners and collaborators. These characteristics give the opportunity to articulate the agreements for the impeachment and to create the fostering of all of these. We should value the importance and we should readdress the activities during the Sustainable Development Forum. We appreciate all this discussion about the innovative agenda with the different development banks and the collaboration for investment in the more dynamic sectors of the worldwide economy and the dialogue with the counterparts. We know that with the new Executive Secretary, and we feel very honored because he is from Costa Rica, we will continue to work in these lines of faction. I would like to highlight the commitment of all the people working in ECLAC and also the support of all the different associate members that have contributed to build a region where we have to serve the major challenges of inclusive development with sustainability, inclusiveness of everyone. So thank you very much for all this contribution throughout these years. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Solano. Now Mister Jorge Foley, Ambassador of Argentina, has the floor.
Good morning. As you already said, I am Jorge Foley, Ambassador of Argentina in Chile. I am representing here the government of Argentina to participate in this special session. And I would like to greet the Executive Secretary, Mister José Manuel Salazar, the Ambassador, Mrs. Paula Narváez, President of ECOSOC and the Permanent Representative of Chile to the United Nations, Mister Solano Ortiz, Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs of Costa Rica, as and you all, as representatives of delegations and accredited to this organization. For Argentina, it's an honor to be invited today to participate here and to convey a message for the 75th anniversary of the creation of ECLAC on behalf of my country that presently is having the pro temporary presidency for this period of time that is coming to an end in 2024. We'd like to take advantage of this opportunity to praise the work carried out by ECLAC since 1948, collaborating with the regions of, with the countries of the region to improve the level of life of our peoples and reinforcing and magnifying the commercial activities or relationships in the region and outside this region. This is the main reason of existence for ECLAC and have been translated into the economic research, in the environmental and social development, all of these geared to satisfy, to meet the needs that the governments have. Throughout these years, it is clear that the work of ECLAC has been very, has an impact in all the policies that have been created and the influence of the thought that is coming from this institution is having consequences in the global economic thought. It is clear that throughout the, through this research and the analysis of the economic and political dynamics of the region, ECLAC is trying to find new responses for the problems that unfortunately are lasting. We can say that ECLAC has achieved this as any other economic commissions around the world, being a technical support for all the government in the country, for the countries, so that the countries could have a sustainable and durable development. The intellectual tradition of this institution, as I already said, has promoted the development of ideas and has elicited some enriching ideas. During the Latin American history, we have many initiatives that have been promoted by ECLAC. For example, the Latin American Association of Free Exchange OLANC that have strengthened the idea that the integration processes would translate into more development for the modest economies. Lastly, Argentina would like to thank all the support that has been provided, like for example, the role of the public funds from guarantees, the digital taxes, the contributions to the social security, all the reactivation of Mercosur Economic Forum. Argentina feels very linked to the history of ECLAC throughout the 75 years. Many secretaries have been Argentinians and have led this organization for 20 years. And they have left a hallmark for participation, Raúl Prevej, very important economic economists, Alberto González from 1985 to 1987 and José Luis Machinier between 2003 and 2008. Argentina today, for the second time, is presiding these positions of ECLAC.
On sustainable development, we therefore thank the collaboration of ECLAC in order to promote jointly and in a successful manner the 39th period of sessions of the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean that was held in 2022 in October in Buenos Aires. The performance of these relevant roles in this sphere coincides with extraordinary circumstances in the social and economic life of our country with a visible decline on the foundations of the economy and in consequence with an accelerated growth, deterioration of the living conditions of my compatriots, that places Argentina in a position before the world of isolation vis-à-vis the dynamic of global capitalism and technological transformation, whilst at the same time, we also are economic independence sufferers. The present reality of Argentina summons us to, or summons ECLAC, to analyze and debate the foundations of economic thinking upheld on with the principles of the welfare state by discussing the principles of economic freedom that replaces academic conceptions that are invalid or in practice since the Second World War. Argentinians demand structural reforms that are profound and lasting, supported by the return of the principle of freedom as a guiding principle for society and for the economy. Today, Argentina is a laboratory for new ideas on society and the economy. And that can lead to a renewed current of economic thinking that could expand throughout Latin America with its consequences on public policies. The pro temporary presidency of this council implies a permanent dialogue with ECLAC in order to accompany the implementation of programs. Argentina thus confirms its commitment to participate in the meetings that will be held during its pro temporary presidency, prioritizing aligned with the document that was submitted in Buenos Aires, an agenda that focuses on the necessary actions in order to reduce the gaps that characterizes the situation of our country vis-à-vis the rest of the world. Argentina also, in addition, presides the Regional Conference on Women of Latin America and the Caribbean, the Conference on South-South Cooperation and the Conference on Science, Technology and Information and Communications Technology. In each one of those fora, we will seek concrete results that may be translated into actions and public policies so that we can strengthen growth, innovation, transformation so that our economies may effectively join the rest of the world and so that our societies may develop with freedom and without any restrictions. I would like to express that Argentina acknowledges ECLAC as a collective space or a list to debate policies and strategies as from and for the region in order to strengthen our economies, to make them much more integrated, but above all, to improve the living conditions of our peoples faced with the challenges that we all know in a very, very difficult international context. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ambassador. And thus, we bring to an end this commemoration of the 75th anniversary and we invite you all to a five-minute coffee break because the official ECOSOC agenda is already running somewhat late. Thank you very much.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the third meeting of the special meeting of the Economic and Social Council on the Future of Work to a productive, inclusive, and sustainable global society. The council will hold a roundtable discussion on the topic shaping a future of decent work and social protection for all. The ongoing technological development, globalization, and demographic changes are reshaping the world of work. Automation, digitalization, and rise of artificial intelligence, about which we heard yesterday, are testing labor market's resilience and contributing to a growing demand for skilled workers in key sectors. Well, this transformation can drive innovation, economic growth, and quality job creation. It may also lead to significant job loss, increasing structural unemployment, and creating inequalities in the labor market. It is essential to be aware of the forthcoming changes and to maximize opportunities and minimize risks. To do so, we need dedicated policies to manage transitions in a positive way, protecting and promoting decent work and social protection. Governments, social partners, and civil society must understand ongoing transformative processes to be able to respond to them and to be involved in their shaping, promoting inclusivity and fairness in the labor market. Policies should be developed through collective, multi-stakeholder engagement, and strong dialogue-based processes with a key role for governments and social partners. We at the United Nations have also an important role to play. Secretary General, in his report on our common agenda, calls for a renewed social contract that encompasses a strong social and economic dimension, including social protection, decent work, and quality education. Rebuilding the social contract through a comprehensive approach based on human rights is key to overcome mistrust between states, citizens, and other stakeholders, and build social cohesion and solidarity, as well as enabling environment for civil society. Only this way, we can foster quality and future-proof job creation, promote the social and green economy, enhance young persons' labor market prospects, and strengthen the labor market participation of women, underrepresented groups, and those facing multiple intersecting forms of discrimination. Dear colleagues, this and next year, we have two great opportunities to contribute to the future of decent work and social protection for all. One is the Summit of the Future and its outcome document, and the other one is the World Social Summit in two thousand and twenty-five. Both events are important milestones in rebuilding trust, solidarity, and cooperation, as well as reducing structural inequalities, bringing us forward to achieving social justice and full realization of the Agenda 2030. We must fully utilize these opportunities. This special session, as well as this particular roundtable, are important contribution in this regard. I am very pleased to welcome the distinguished speakers joining us for this roundtable. The keynote speaker is Mr. Juan Somavia, President of the Permanent Forum on Foreign Policy of Chile, Honorary Club de Madrid, former Director General of ILO, and let me also add, former President of ECOSOC during two mandates. The panelists are Ms. Luz Vidal, Vice Minister of Women and Gender Equality of Chile, Ms. Maria Noel Vaessa, Regional Director for Latin America and the Caribbean of UN Women, Ms. Saru Duckworth, Next Generation Fellow for Jobs and Economic Opportunities of the UN Foundation, and Ms. Robaliza Halip, Representative of the Indigenous Peoples' Major Group. I am also pleased to welcome the moderator, Ms. Georgina Braga-Oriar, UNDP Resident Representative in Chile. I also acknowledge the participation of the discussion, Ambassador Gladys Mokhava, Permanent Representative of Botswana to the United Nations in New York. We will begin with our keynote speaker, Mr. Juan Somavia. Dear Juan, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. We have worked together in the past, so there's something about the New York crowd, you know, that we keep repeating ourselves and finding ourselves in different circumstances.
Recycling.
Recycling, recycling. Well, that's a good beginning to say that I feel so much at home, because ECOSOC is very much a part of my life. Before, I was ambassador to the UN, during my duty in the UN and afterwards. So, very happy, thank you for this invitation. Let me say how happy we are to see Paula Narváez, Ambassador Paula Narváez, heading ECOSOC. She's a major Chilean personality. Don't forget that she was a candidate to be president, so it's not anything in the country. But she is now giving her condition, her capacity for leadership, to something that is now essential in the world, which is, well, we need the UN to deliver. And I'm going to be, you know, talking about that. So, the UN is being looked at, if I can say it that way. So, I'm extremely happy to be here, and I'm wearing a civil society hat. I had the Foreign Policy Forum of Chile, and also I'm a member of the Club de Madrid, by the way, whose president, Alino Turk, who was also a former ambassador to the UN, has been promoting very much the notion of a new way of looking at social development, on the basis of the social summit, so has been very extremely active. I'm speaking in the context of an institution that is giving a lot of importance to the need to look at social issues on the basis of the social summit. You know, in preparing for this, saying came to my mind, which I particularly like, which is, the best way is, the best way to predict the future is to invent it, which I couldn't imagine a better description of what the UN is about, you know? It's not about looking what the future is and not doing anything about it, but inventing what you need to do. So I think it's a perfect reflection of the challenge that we have in front of us. And that means that the what and the how have to go together. And we are very good at being ambitious about the what and not so good about the how. You sort of leave it there, and I will concentrate on the how in relation to the issues that are the decent work and social protection. In addressing the future of decent work and social protection, I will concentrate on the how, and in particular, what I feel is a key political and international cooperation initiative to deal with it, which is the potential World Social Summit 2025. A well-conceived, well-prepared summit by member states with ample participation of all relevant parties could generate a global dynamic to get people's issues, needs, demands, aspirations, moving out of the relative stagnation they are today. Just some figures, sixty percent of employed workers are informal, forty billion people don't have any social protection at all. Pre-pandemic gender income gap would take seventy years to close, and this is a constant in gender statistics. The decades and decades and decades that you have in front of us just to reach equality. All the data that was discussed yesterday and the fact that, you know, we are, you know, we have relatively, we don't have very good results from the 2030 Agenda, which brings me to the idea that this needs a necessary political push. And the political push that I see available is, as the President said, whatever is relevant in the Summit of the Future, but very particularly it's the Social Development Summit, which has to do with everything of the issues that we've been discussing this week. I am proud to say that the Copenhagen Summit was a Chilean initiative. At the time, it was both the biggest meeting of heads of state and government in history of the UN and the first occasion in which people's issues, as we called them then, received such extraordinary global political support. I was involved in the process as ambassador of Chile, recently recovered democratic tradition at the time, and I chaired the preparatory committee in which our main worry was to have the necessary time to do a good job. And from the moment it was launched, which was November ninety-two, to March ninety-five, we have two and a half years to do it. And I have to say that that time, the fact that we had the time, was an essential part of the success because you could talk about it, you didn't have to have one opportunity to agree, you know, you had the time, discussion, et cetera. I'm mentioning it because we have a time problem with the social summit and the World Summit, and the future of the Summit of the Future sort of coming at the same time and sort of colliding, and I want to address that issue. But today, we have a very different international context than the one we had at the time. When we proposed the social summit in the Social Committee of ECOSOC in May ninety-one, the Cold War was coming to an end, and there was hope in the air. The belief that the multilateral world and the United Nations could play a greater role in peacekeeping and addressing development issues. In our days, the varied level of discontent and lack of trust with governance and institutions in so many places has in part also reached the United Nations. The question, quote unquote, "What is the UN doing about it?" is something that appears more than I would like to see. Clearly, I believe on social issues, much, much more is done than what is seen, but the question is there. For the United Nations, that is, it's a hundred and ninety-three state members acting together, a successful social summit decided and organized by them is a major political opportunity to show that it has heard and acted on the social discontent we are seeing, and also that it is responding to hope that continues to be out there in terms of what the UN can do for people. And the Copenhagen is a point of departure, the cohen summit, which in fact is the first line of our, you know, document, a guiding document today. So I understand that what we're being told by this document is, look, we have to be looking at what has already been done and think about the future. A key element of the United Nations' of the summit's success will be something that I feel is essential today, the degree to which the results reflect a very varied regional, national and local specificity of social development issues from a national perspective. We need to get to the moment in which we begin putting down and writing our agreements. We have to have the feeling and the perception of what is being felt, you know, back home in terms of the local, the provincial, the national field, way in which these things are being looked at. I will make some comments on that later on, but I think it's absolutely essential that that happened in the process of preparing. My question in relation to this is, why is it that it continues to be so difficult to place people, individuals, families, workers, citizens, women, the poor and vulnerable human beings at the heart of the benefits of development and growth? It is first and foremost an answer we must seek within our own societies. You know, what do we do to maximize our national capacity for political convergence of national interests? That's local situation for all countries. But in this interconnected world, we have to think together better on how to address the diversity of structural and emerging obstacles faced on how to deal with them. I think that the what, the how and the obstacles is, again, something that has to go together, and we have to be able to concentrate and say, well, okay, but what are the obstacles of these things that we're proposing and this, you know, the sentences that we're putting in here, where are they obstacles? In fostering policy, as I said before, we're good at saying what to do, less so on how to do it. To move forward, for the UN, there is certainly a responsibility to act and bite the bullet, but also a significant political opportunity to be relevant in the case of the social summit. And to be relevant in what way? If we address the social summit, it means that you're based on what we already have, which is the Declaration, the Copenhagen Declaration. Add to that the 2030 Agenda because it's to support that process. At the same time, you have the old that was cited in relation to the SDG summit, which guides us with very strong wording. So you have, and whatever comes out of the Summit of the Future, you have a package there that we need to be able to see how we've put it together. To move forward, we don't have easy answers and certainly no models to follow. So to move forward, we need to go back to basics in one particular sense. What's the significance of decent work and social protection? The social significance? Why are we using this concept of decent work? Why are we using social protection? The very notion of decent work is a whole of society approach. It is based in the founding, on the founding principle of the ILO that labor is not a commodity. And the quality of work defines in many ways the quality of a society. It moves the axis of analysis from the economic cost of labor to the social value of work. And this apparent analytical question lands smack in the middle of real life because high levels of decent work in your life and your community achieved to the implementation of ILO conventions and recommendations is a source of many things. It's a source of personal dignity, we prove ourselves at work, it's a source of greater family stability and security in the way people want to live together, it's a source of more peaceful communities where there is well-being, there is less tension and violence, it is a source of better organization and citizen participation, you feel much more a part of society, and it is a source of policy and political opinion because you look around, you look at your own reality and you draw conclusions. If decent work can be all of this, it means that the whole of society perspective, that its true significance lies in its contribution to a peaceful and integrated society rather than being considered just a cost of production. I won't go into details, but the same happens with universal social protection. It must be seen as a lifecycle investment in human security rather than that the simple burdensome social expenditure. And this is the foundation for ILO's recommendation on social protection floors, which means that it's not the same floor globally, but we have to decide, you see, society should have a social protection floor nationally determined. And I come to the end, and I don't know too well what's the best way of positing it, but I've come up with one, which is what do we do? And what do states do? And what does the UN do? And I feel uncomfortable about saying what you have to do, particularly, you know, traditionally, that's not, you know, what civil society representatives should be doing. But I do think that I would miss my responsibility if I don't do this. So the manner in which I'm planning to say is, I had a dream last night. I had a dream, and this is my dream, and I want to share with you my dream. And of course, I come back to the first sentence, that the best way to know the future is to invent it. We've got to become inventive. So there's a little bit of invention in which I'm going to say. Of course, this is not the Martin Luther King. It's a very small dream. So my dream is the following: Soon after this meeting, you came together in New York and resolved the differences you had on the process of convening summit, and finally found a way to launch a Second World Social Summit to deal with the reality of today. The PTA then quickly appointed two co-facilitators, and a bureau was established. Now, in my dream, what is the key? What is the essence of this happening? If that happens, member states give... Member states give themselves the instruments to manage the preparatory process, and I think that this is very important. The sooner you take decisions in order to manage the preparatory process, the better results we're going to have from a social summit. And this is a fundamental point because I then, if you have in your hands the management of the process, then there are some things which I think could be done relatively rapidly. So ask, you know, this is a whole of UN initiative, and if this happens, then what could happen at the same time? And I would finish with that. You could give instructions, mandates, requests, I don't know what the appropriate word is, for a whole of the UN system, action and contribution to the summit. Of what order? You know, support countries were requested in the definition of their needs and policy priorities through an appropriate engagement of the resident coordinator system and country teams. We have a hundred and thirty coordinators. Imagine that sixty or seventy countries would like this process to go through. The idea that you can, you know, the UN be useful in having the internal discussions that lead to saying, no, in our country, and for us, the social summit means this. And then you're going to have an enormous amount of countries because, you know, if your responsibility is in one country, you can do it relatively soon. But can you imagine that all of this is done in the course of 2024? And this is available later on for when you meet in twenty-five. Everything that I'm going to say is going to be done outside of New York and will not be hampering the discussion that in New York takes place on the future of the summit. These are things that, in this case, I'm talking about, helping countries that want to do that analyze their individual situation. And I'm thinking particularly of delegations, which are many, that do not have too many people in their staff in New York. The second one, that thing that could happen, in the same vein, linked to these exercises, the regional commission could advance, the regional commissions could advance in the identification of the principal regional strategic interests and collective policy No, for example, the Latin American Commission will be chairing the group of regional commissions have always have a coordinator, it is a pal in this occasion. This thing could be done at each region, could be done together, again, not an enormous amount of work because there's a lot of people who be doing it because you have the different regional commissions. Third one, we have not assumed the fact that the United Nations has a social mandate. And a very strong and very clear social mandate, if we decide to look at it. Now, we haven't been looking at it too much, so we don't talk about a UN social mandate, but what is it? The need to articulate this social mandate emerges from the Charter, the Universal Declaration, the principal specialized agencies and UNDP and a couple of other ones, and the pertinent conventions, declarations, resolutions, among others. So what would happen if the heads of agencies of six, seven of these organizations come together and distill, you know, what they do in their social minded and try to see how you can put the whole thing together? Because ILO has it, because UNESCO has it, because UNICEF has it, because the World Health Organization has it, et cetera, but these are parallel processes. If we have a social summit, the possibility of putting this together would be relatively high. These three things, you know, working through the resident coordinator, the regional commission, and getting these institutions who work together doesn't hamper at all the process in New York that is dedicated to the Summit of the Future. But then you would, you know, you could gain a good amount of time if you do it while you're discussing in New York the Summit of the Future. This is the essence of the dream. So I come back, I come back to the dream. I hope the dream comes true. If the dream doesn't come true, well, it was just a dream, but I wanted to share it with you because I think, I believe, you know, and I do have to use a little bit my head of, you know, being in the business. My experience is that the first summit was successful because we had the time to deal with differences. The less time you have, the more complex it is. So we better set them out. We already know there are some, let's grit over them so we can get the process going, and let's give ourselves the time to discuss them, you know? If we sort of wait because we have no time and we have to concentrate on the Summit of the Future, I can assure you, we will not have a time to have a good social summit. So I just wanted to leave it there. It's a great opportunity. I'm talking a little bit in a very frank way because I feel very much a part of what you are, so I've taken the liberty to do that. But I think that this is extremely important. It's a chance we have, but the chance we have requires soon decisions on this matter. Thank you so, so very much to be here again with all of you. Thank you so much.
It is me who want to thank you, dear Juan, on behalf of all of us, for your statement that was as inspiring as always. I would also like to thank you for so clearly showing that decent work and social protection for all are not just words, but that those are UN values that we should be implementing and that we should use social summit to put to practice. I also thank you very much for sharing with us your dream about what we should be doing when we return to New York, but also the way towards a social summit based on your vast experience. And now I turn over the floor to Ms. Georgina Braga-Oriar. And now I turn over the floor to Ms. Georgina Bragavariar to moderate the panel. Dear moderator, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. With those inspiring words from Mr. Somavia and a strong call to prepare the social summit, it's really an honor to moderate this panel. This is the final, but maybe the most important panel of the special meeting, which focuses on the shaping of the future of decent work and social protection for all. My role today will be to ensure that the discussions lead to a better understanding of around the following questions. How do emerging technologies bring opportunities and to reduce poverty and inequality and promote the labor market, inclusion of women and disadvantaged groups? What policy measures are needed? What strategies are needed to address persistent informality and promote the well-being of workers in informal employment? What are some best practices? How can greater international coordination and cooperation help promote labor rights and access to social protection? How can they be strengthened? And what measures can help promote women's participation in the labor market and their professional careers? Addressing global trends in poverty and inequality, especially their connection to employment, employment and decent work, requires urgent, innovative and creative policy responses. Creating a more inclusive future of work involves promoting jobs and companies that uphold workers' rights, expand social protection for all and foster social dialogue. But also, it involves responding to the major challenge of informality. In Latin America and the Caribbean region, informal, informal employment prevails, and the risk of falling into poverty is much higher for informal workers. In our region, informal workers are three to four times more likely to be poor than formal workers and represent between seventy and ninety percent of the total poor workers in the region. Therefore, focus on women, rural populations, indigenous migrants, refugees and other populations left behind is essential to create resilient labor markets and economies. Moreover, according to ILO, here in the region, one out of every two women remained outside the labor market after the COVID nineteen pandemic. Here in Chile, we published in two thousand twenty-two a joint study between UNDP and ILO, Women and the Return to Work: Lessons to Close the Employment Gap. The study aimed to understand why Chilean women, who had stopped working during the pandemic, did not return to the labor market, despite the resilience that the country demonstrated in relation to the pandemic. And one of the most relevant lessons was the centrality of care. The ma- the majority of those who did not return to the labor market had children under fifteen. They lacked support networks to delegate caregiving responsibilities, and they also lacked resources to hire these services. In a context of transformation in the world of work, this study showed us that we need a new architecture of public policies for decent work, where the tissue of care is at the center of our responses. Yesterday, we heard about artificial intelligence, the role of education, skills training, social protection, pensions. And now it is my honor to moderate this very exciting all-women panel. On that note, I'd like to turn to our first panelist, dear Vice Minister of Women and Gender Equality of Chile, Ms. Luz Vidal.
Muy buenos dias.
A very good morning, distinguished delegations and authorities. On behalf of the government of Chile, I'm very pleased to be able to speak to you today about what we have been doing in Chile to try to close the gaps that exist in the labor market and to provide more dignified work for women. Emerging technologies can provide opportunities to reduce poverty and inequality, and they can also be used to promote women's inclusion and the inclusion of marginalized groups in the labor market. In Chile, labor informality includes all economic activities and occupations that are not adequately covered by formal systems. Data from the National Statistics Institute show that even though the gap between informal and formal jobs has closed, women do sever, do nevertheless have higher levels of informality at work than men. And that is why we need to incorporate a gender perspective in these strategies that we have to reduce this gap. As has been stated in the strategy to reduce and/or eliminate restrictions on women's economic empowerment, which has been brought forward by the Ministry of Gender Equality, we need to ensure that there is the appropriate, that are the appropriate conditions in place to reduce the impact of restrictions on women's economic empowerment. We need to be able to implement public policies to facilitate women's access to the workforce on an equal footing with men, so that they can access decent jobs and that they can move towards substantive equality. We also need to establish the relevant institutional architecture, both within the public and private domains, which will allow the strategy to be long-lasting in time. Together with this, another strategy to reduce informal work must also include care work as a key part of this policy, so that women can be fully empowered. We need to ensure that we have a comprehensive response to this issue, both at the level of the state, the market, and within communities and families. Having said that, I would just like to touch on two domains in which we have made significant progress in Chile. One is in education, and the second is in reconciling the need for a balance between work and, and other duties. The government of Chile has made significant strides forward to promote women's inclusion in new technologies. Recently, we have launched a policy to reduce the gaps that exist in STEM careers. It is called More Women Scientists, and it aims to provide additional quotas to incentivize women to join this area of the economy. And this can ensure the country's sustainable development as well. We have therefore found extra posts in these, in this domain with two hun- two thousand three hundred and eighty-five quotas in four hundred and ten programs in thirty-nine universities. These efforts to promote women's inclusion in the STEM careers have yielded fruit. According to recent data from the Ministry of Education, we have seen a significant increase of sixteen point eight percent in women joining STEM careers in comparison with the previous year. This has increased women's participation in the, in this area from twenty-seven percent to thirty percent. The experience of this program highlights how important it is to have specific actions to foster gender equality and to boost women's representation in areas that are critical for development and innovation. This notable increase in women's participation in STEM careers supports and shows how effective the government policies can be in actively promoting women's participation in areas that were traditionally only dominated by men. Another experience that I wish to mention pertains to public-private collaboration in these areas. INACAP, which is the technical research unit, has rolled out a STEAM program, which provides scholarships of fifty percent of the total fees for all women who wish to enroll in any of the fourteen technological degrees in the Technical Training Center throughout Chile. The institution also signed a convention with the Ministry of Gender Equality, so that INACAP, this body, can provide, in some cases, one hundred percent scholarships to one hundred women who participate in this program. This scholarship doesn't just aim to incentivize women to enroll in these degrees, but also to support their staying in the, in the program and their success. And this helps us to build a more diverse and equitable labor force in the technological sector in Chile. However, we do still have some challenges that we have to overcome if we are to fulfill our commitment to leave no one behind. And when we talk about fostering inclusion, we shouldn't overlook the fact that our policies and actions must reach all women throughout the country, regardless of where they may live, regardless of their ethnicity or their age. And I would just like to, to stress that last point, because we need to get rid of, of technological gaps that exist in a cross-cutting and intergenerational way. Today, the use of technology is critical for all kinds of work, and older women cannot be left behind. We have also a workshop, which is called Conectadas, which aims to foster the digital inclusion of women in sectors that have been somewhat at the fringes of this technological revolution. I'm referring particularly to older women and women in rural areas who may suffer particularly from the digital gap. And this is a way of ensuring women's, older women's empowerment and personal development. In terms of reconciling different duties, President Boric has promulgated a law that allows for work and family life to be reconciled. This law stipulates the right to remote work for people who are carrying out care work for children under fourteen or people who have a disability or who have severe or moderate dependence. This allows people to carry out some or all of their work day or part of their work week remotely, provided, of course, that the relevant conditions are met. In addition to this, people who care for children other, under fourteen or teenagers under eighteen who have a disability have a right to legal holidays and can ask for their shifts to be amended as appropriate during the school holidays. In addition to this, in order to improve the quality of life for people who carry out care work, we are working in the, a, a comprehensive care system, which is known as Chile Cares. To better set up this system, we have been working also by looking at the experiences of other nations in the region, such as Uruguay and Colombia, and also Japan. This cooperation has provided our country with the opportunity to learn from the successful experiences of other countries in their implementation of care systems and programs. We should also recognize that policies geared towards mitigating gender injustices must adopt a comprehensive global perspective. We cannot make progress in isolation. International cooperation is a key part of this process so that we can build ties of inclusion and solidarity at the multilateral level. In this regard, cooperation doesn't just enrich our strategies, but it also helps us to build a fairer and more equitable social fabric. Representatives of different nations, representatives of the UN, I would just like to end with the following comment. I think we've heard Mr. Somavia talk about a dream. I also have a dream for Latin America, and I have a dream for society, societies in the world. We can't let this level of development that we're seeing continue to lead to such great inequality. We think, I think we must have the necessary commitment and undertake efforts to make sure that even though we've got this great level of development, we do not see such great inequality. This level of inequality that we're seeing in the world is not sustainable. Citizens, all citizens, need to be part and parcel of the development that we're seeing. It is our duty as representatives of states to ensure that these gaps, these inequality gaps do not persist, particularly for the most vulnerable. Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you so much for your thoughts and also for your emotions and for sharing with us the initiatives that the government has been undertaking to try to grapple with these problems, to overcome these barriers to inclusion. Thank you. I now give the floor to the Regional Director for UN Women, Maria Noel Beassa. Thank you very much indeed. I would also like to greet Paulo Navais. And we're very proud of Ms. Navais. Thank you so much for inviting us, and we're very proud of your work at the helm of ECOSOC. Of course, it's also great to have the Vice Minister of Women of Chile with us and also Mr. Somavia, and it's great to be with you all today.
As, as I prepared, I thought we were not able to talk in Spanish, so I'm happy to, to address what I prepared. And it has to, to do also with a dream. The dream of the Beijing Platform of Action, that will be thirty years in twenty twenty-five, and we are not even closer to, to get it. So let's add another dream to the dream of Juan Somavia and Luz Vidal, which I think it is important that we recall that the United Nations is not ready to do another conference of women. So we need to bring it back and to remind all the member states that we have a roadmap there that we need to accomplish. And I think that we can advance the decent work and the reduction of poverty and inequality, and also the, the attention of intersectionalities. But we, women, we are not the same. As Luz mentioned, we have women that are indigenous, women that have disabilities, women that are migrants that are in the, in the movement in the region, and women that are from other social, sexual orientation, that they are not taken into consideration in the statistics. Barely now the statistic consider women, but we don't consider race, ethnicity. So we have so much work to do, and it's important that we bring it to the, to the ECOSOC, this, this reflection. And we have to take advantage that the, the decent work, the work of the future is being discussed on the basis of what yesterday Mr. Sack said. Education is key, and education is essential. And education as well in technology, in stems. And I'm happy to hear what Chile is doing on, in stems, which is essential to eliminate that gap. Don't forget that only twenty-eight percent of engineer graduates in the world are women. We have a long way to go, as much as in the political participation, in the economic participation, but also in the education. So it's critical that we base the quality of education and the quality of who intervenes in the education of the future that will shape the work of the future. So it is very, very important that we think all these issues, in particularly the digitalization and the gap that still exists between men and women. Almost forty percent of the global employment is exposed to artificial intelligence. But unfortunately, women are not there. And it's impossible to shape an equal world, an equal world without women in shaping that technology. So this is why it's so important to link education in stems to the, to the future of world. It is essential also to formulate comprehensive policies that address the structural causes of gender inequality with proactive policies. We still need them. We are not there yet. So it is important that those proactive policies exist, regulations that guarantee the exercise, exercise of the right in the digital area and progress in affirmative measures to promote gender equality. Integration of women into the digital sectors will generate quality employment with multiple benefits. And transitions to sustainability and digitalization have the potential to create millions of decent jobs, particularly for women. It is necessary also that countries adopt mechanisms for the promotion of gender policies in the scientific institutions, such as stimulating the creation of formal structures for the respect of women's rights within science, technology and innovation. It's funny, the other day I participate in a, in a medical convention. I was invited, and it was the first time that the gender dimension was addressed after two hundred years of having that forum. So we are making advances. They are desperately slow, but we are making advances. And we need everybody's contribution through strategic financial incentive, using public resources, but also private resources. That's where the resources are. And we need the private sector to understand that seventy-five percent of the decisions of purchasing services or goods are women who make them in their households. So unless the private sector understands the importance of women's decision-making. you know, goods and services are not going to be built based on what women's needs and women's desires to have those goods and services. So we reached to a moment where the private sector needs to be a major actor in gender equality. So, and also, as I said, focus on girls' education in STEM. Women's regional labor in my region, in Latin America and the Caribbean, is still overwhelmingly informal, as we heard before. Without legal protection and access to social services, the gender gap will continue to expand, unfortunately. Fifty-four percent of women in the region has job instability, as Eclac says to us, low income and lack of protection rights. And now that I am approaching the silver economy and the retirement age, I understand that we have to also include elderly women. Unfortunately, our region is losing the bonus of population. And in the twenty years to come, we will have more women and men that are eighty-five, eighty years and older. And the social services do not include this. And as you know, women live a little bit longer than men normally. So it is important that in the intersectionalities, we also consider elderly women. Also, don't forget, and this is for me the most important element that our region has tackled in the Buenos Aires Conference for Women two years ago, the consensus of Buenos Aires, we call it, to create care systems. We believe that the most important element, and I would say dividend, that the world can have by creating care systems are in the family, but also in the economy, by creating those formal works, but also a double effect. Creating jobs in the care system allows women to go out and work. We need more women in the labor market, in the former labor markets. And in this region, the ministers of gender decided that it is by creating the care system. So I'm happy to, to hear the, the study of UNDP. And lastly, for us, it's essential, the coordination, the cooperation, and of course, bringing back the Beijing Plan of Action and the thirty years that we will celebrate in 2025. And I hope the social summit will consider the mayor results of, of the Beijing Plan of Action that are still there to tackle. And of course, the SED number five on gender equality. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity, and UN Women is very happy to work, continue working with ECOSOC.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Maria Noel. We continue on the dreams.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Now, I pass the floor to Saro Dequert, the Next Generation Fellow for Jobs and Economic Opportunities of the UN Foundation.
Thank you so much. It's an absolute pleasure to be here. Thank you especially to the ambassador from Chile and members of ECOSOC for having me. We do need a big push. We need a big push on poverty. That was the word that kept coming to my mind, and I'm so glad to hear it echoed along the panel, especially the impacts of poverty on youth. For a child born today who will live to see the year 2100, it seems distant, but that's many of our children, that's our grandchildren. The UN predicts that they're going to grow up in a world where nine out of ten of all people live in Africa and Asia. Transformative. And many of those countries that they'll live in, where over fifty percent of people will be young, will, are experiencing right now rising or stagnating inequality and poverty. If that same child happens to be born into poverty, unfortunately, as high today as a fifty percent chance, it will take them between four and five generations to reach the average national income level of their country. That's far too long. And that recognizes that the average income level of many countries is far from providing a decent quality of life. And young people are deeply aware of the inequalities that are costing them and their peers their futures. Globally, each new generation actually pulls as even more likely than the previous generation to recognize and, and report inequality as a top issue in their country and demand that their governments take action. So absolutely, inequality is at the center of all of the, of the action that we must take. How do we make inequality and its disproportionate effects on young people our center of gravity in this year of review and meaningful action on STG one? That's what I hope that we can come to some agreement on here and now. The costs of these interventions have to be squared with the costs of inaction, recognizing that if we invest in young people, it isn't just about reducing inequality for them, it's about helping us all. Healthy and educated, empowered young people are proven to be more resilient to crises. They're better equipped to deal with global challenges like climate change. They're better able to pass on skills and resources to their children to break intergenerational cycles of poverty. They can contribute more to their economies, drive growth, prosperity, and become leaders who can ultimately help deliver the sustainable development goals. So I want to build on yesterday's discussion and just highlight several inclusive models that are drawn actually from an upcoming report on STG's one and eight, the poorest young people. Drafted an intergenerational collaboration with senior leaders and young people, a process that might take a little bit longer, but ultimately is one of our most underutilized tools for realizing our greatest goals across generations. So the three shifts that we see as vital, the first was really eloquently described by our ASG for Youth Affairs yesterday. Connecting, connecting our generation now, both digitally to the internet, but also to social inclusion and to the tools for wellbeing that are vital for young people to be productive. The second is that we need financing. We need financing that is scaled, that has a national budget line, that is laser focused on breaking intergenerational cycles of poverty. And third, we need to make sure that both of these investments, connection and financing, are designed to propel youth innovation and entrepreneurship, which will ultimately be the path of the future for so many young people that have missed out on a decent childhood education, but still have decades of life and productive ability to contribute. And these align, by the way, with the chapters of the Pact of the Future and are youthful proposals that I think can, can sit at the heart. It's important to mention that across all of these, multi-stakeholder and participatory design is critical. It's a very different thing to have, you know, a government provide childcare at a public works program site for poor women. It's another thing for them to be empowered with the resources and tools to design that program themselves. The difference in quality and satisfaction when, when they bring a model to the government and find a way to partner together, that is really, has to be at the center of all of our solutions. In the interest of time, I'll just go into the first shift quickly on connection. All of my generation, all students like me and those to come, must have the chance to be connected and learning together. So with recent advancements and cost-effective technologies, it's, it's no longer a distant dream. Actually, it could be achieved right now. And we have data, as, as some have pointed out, we have data to make smart investment cases, to bring private finance to the table, to make blended finance models that help to build infrastructure in hard-to-reach areas. And once we have connectivity, we can unlock the potential, I believe, to really build and combine the programs that we already have to create a robust digital education system that works for everyone. Already, you know, top universities, including Oxford, Cambridge, have generated short online skills courses that thousands of young people have completed, received certifications for. And that kind of model could provide business skills and training services to thousands more who have missed out on education. Additionally, these kinds of platforms that integrate AI tools, like AI voice technology and digital Braille apps, these can enhance accessibility for all students, including those with disabilities. And just beyond digital connection, it's really about human connection. It's about mental health, inclusion, that young people living at the margins really need. Peer networks. Peer networks are, are existing. They're underutilized. They're incredibly powerful when we build them and we leverage them. For example, in Kazakhstan, Kazakhstan once had the third highest rate of suicide among youth. And they launched a visionary and successful nationwide program that trained young people in schools to recognize the effects of mental illness among their peers and refer them to mental health professionals, drastically lowering that number. There's another really fabulous, scalable model for out-of-school girls in Uganda, where BRAC and other partners have created safe spaces within or near schools for young women to bond and learn business skills. Finally, I want to offer that no young person does this alone. For better or worse, you know, evidence shows that your family broadly defined, that's still the best predictor of what a young person's income is going to be at forty. And, you know, in studies, low economic mobility, low education levels persist among children whose parents are given startup loans or SME loans because there's pressure to reinvest in their business rather than send their kids to school. So these are some of the limits. As incredible and important as education is, these are some of the current limits of our human capital and education systems. And it points us towards the need for holistic interventions that can tailor, can be tailored to multiple members of the household at one time, powering multiple generations together to emerge from poverty. So some of these examples are economic inclusion programs, which can be scaled through national social protection systems, have lasting outcomes on confidence and social inclusion, as well as development and income levels for parents. But they also improve childhood outcomes on nutrition, health, education, and more. So this is what I mean in conclusion when I say funding transformation. It's these kinds of scaled, big push investments that are really going to be capable of disrupting cycles of poverty and making our economies inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Saro. Thank you, Saro. So connect, finance, and propel innovation. That's very, very good. So I immediately turn to our next discussant, Ravi Halep, representative of the Indigenous Peoples' Major Group. Please, I just remind that we have three minutes so, so that we can actually after open the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's not an easy task to be traveling halfway around the world, but if this, if this is what it takes for Indigenous peoples to be able to raise our concerns and make it visible to states, then we do what we need to do. Now, I agree with the point a while ago on, we need a new structure for decent work. We need to veer away from, from work being defined as grooming, grooming people to enter into a very competitive and in most instances, a very exploitative labor market. We've seen in COVID, the rise of informal economies, the rise of homegrown economies. And these are the opportunities that we have at hand that we could, we could nurture on. It's about supporting livelihood opportunities of the people in line with the development that they want. Now, for Indigenous peoples, it's important for us, the direct access to financing and technology. Now, I'd like to give some examples on where we are using technology to be able to advance our self-determined development in line with the transition to renewable energy. Tunibung, an organization in Malaysia, has been working on providing not only access to electricity for off-grid Indigenous communities, but also supporting Indigenous women to enhance their agricultural productivity and their agricultural income by providing solar, solar dryers for their agricultural products to be able to be marketed into the cities. These are, these are the kinds of support that's needed at the community level, direct access to financing, and also support for technology in partnership with governments and also in partnership with the private sector. The other point that I'd like to point out in relation to traditional occupation of Indigenous peoples is the presence of enabling policies recognizing our traditional occupation as part of decent work. In many instances, there are policies that exist, but these policies criminalize our traditional occupation or restricts us from practicing our traditional occupation. And this has an impact not only to our livelihood and economic development, but also to our culture and to our identity and our continuity as people. So it's important that when we talk about policies on livelihood, policies on economic empowerment, they should be with a meaningful participation of Indigenous peoples to ensure that it does, it does not adversely impact on our rights as a people. The next point that I also want to point out in this is the wider issue of the lack of recognition of Indigenous peoples' collective rights to our land and resources. Even if we have economic opportunities in our territories, even if we're able to pursue our self-determined development, if there is no land tenure, there's no land security for us, if every day we are being threatened that we will be displaced by projects that are being imposed in our territories, or if every day we are being threatened that we will be displaced by conservation measures, then this would all go to waste. So it's important that at the wider level, there's a legal recognition of our collective rights to our land and resources and that this legal recognition be also implemented. Because even in countries where there is laws that recognizes Indigenous peoples' rights, the implementation is quite weak. So it's not enough to have policies in place, it's not to have, it's not enough to have laws. But the political will to be implementing these policies is also important. Now, as we move forward, oh, the last point on this one also is also the implementation of global commitments of states. The adoption of the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples is a very important measure, and we need to have this also implemented at the national level, including the ILO Convention on One Six Nine Four States who have already ratified it, and for states who have not, we do encourage you to do so. Now, as we move forward to the Summit of the Future and to the upcoming summits that are being planned, we refuse to just be mentioned in the listing of vulnerable populations without even recognizing the threats that we are facing that's marginalizing us and also without even recognizing that we are contributing to sustainable development. It's important that as we move forward to these summits and to shaping the future that we want, it's important that rights holders, Indigenous peoples, the civil society are in the table also discussing all these texts and all these references to us as peoples. It's not, what, what we're experiencing right now is we're in the sidelines, providing our written inputs, but that's not enough. We have to have spaces. Spaces have to be provided to the civil society, to the people, to be able to meaningfully engage. And for Indigenous peoples, it's important that our right to free prior and informed consent in all matters that affects us, whether policy, programs, or projects, are really properly implemented. Now, we do all have a dream. But for Indigenous communities, every second, every minute, we're experiencing a lot of threats and harassments. And we need, we need to act now. Yes, we need to dream, but we need to act now. And we need to take decisive actions to really save, to really save our planet from further destruction because of development priorities that's being developed at the global level without considering the care for nature and care for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi. This is really inspiring in the call for self-determined development and the meaningful participation of Indigenous peoples. Very, very important. Thank you very much. And now I give the floor to the discussant to further stimulate the dialogue. Ambassador Gladys Makawa, Ambassador and Permanent Representative of Botswana to the United Nations. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, moderator. Good morning, colleagues. Don't know whether it's still morning. Yes, it is. I want to first extend, I want to first extend my gratitude to Your Excellency Yvonne Simonovic, President of this particular agenda, and also Ambassador and Pia Crozier to the United Nations, also Chair of the Session for Comprehensive Session. I wanted to say this because I know that often than not, we don't give so much attention to the, to the session that you are chairing, Your Excellency. I think, I thought I would start first by perhaps maybe pointing out that it would be perhaps more proficient for us to contextualize these particular discussions within the Secretary General's report, which the, the Chair has already enunciated much more earlier, especially the report on our common agenda, which makes a recommendation to the renewal of the social contract between governments and people. And I think this is, this was touched upon by the keynote speaker as well when he talked about the discontent, especially nationally within the people, that it is perhaps maybe an opportune time for us to go back and renegotiate between governments and individuals as well. So in so doing, also want to look forward to the World Social Summit, first the Summit for the Future, the World Social Summit, and its preparatory processes to be held in 2025. I will start by appraising or touching a bit on what the keynote speaker has elucidated in his presentation. I think you started off quite well by pointing out to focus more on the why, sort of on the how rather than the what. And I think in that trajectory, it, it And I think in that trajectory, it's, it enumerated quite a number of, of issues which I think are of importance at this meeting, but also in us going forward in terms of trying to uh uh renegotiate or dialogue on issues that have to do with the, with the, the, the future of work and more importantly with uh reconfiguring uh social protection programs in, in our specific countries. I would like to highlight quite a few of things that you brought forward in your presentation, uh keynote speaker. You talked of the need for uh uh, you know, international cooperation and how critical it is at this particular juncture to be really focusing on what the platform that is the United Nations can actually provide insofar as the political push is concerned, that is the Summit for the Future and also the Social Summit. Uh but more importantly, I think it was key as a premise for our discussions today to really uh demonstrate that as individual member countries of the United Nations are confronted with serious issues of, as you pointed out, of social discontent. And that should be the starting point in terms of what we want to do insofar as the future of, of work is concerned and also the, 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 the social protection programs. I was also, uh, I thought also what was key in your presentation was the, the political convergence of national interest as well. Because that is uh an opportune time for governments uh to actually deal with this particular problem of social contentment within their, their own specific countries. So I won't go into details because I think you did enough beautiful work of that that I'll perhaps maybe spoil the, the soup at this particular juncture. So um, uh, I think you, you, I, I'm not gonna go too much into detail, but you brought forward your dream. And in the dream, and in the dream, what I took cue from was the fact that you said that the United Nations has a strong social mandate. And I think in a, in an environment that we're currently in where the UN is also finding itself having to grapple with so many other mandates and responsibility that it has, especially political ones, it is key for us to revisit this particular concept and remind ourselves that really part of the key uh goal of why we, the UN was set up was to ensure that uh, ensure the social responsibility for, for member states and, and citizens at that. So uh thank you so much for, for bringing forth that. So before I go into individual uh presentations of our panelists here, uh, I'm gonna borrow a bit from the Secretary General as well when he talked about the inflection point that we find ourselves is. But I'm not going to talk about inflection point in so far as the summit, uh sorry, the common agenda is concerned, but rather in terms of the, the alterations as provided for by, by the uh, the future of work and also uh the need for reconfiguring the social protection uh programs as a result of these particular alterations. And I think presentations were in that different ways, were trying to bring uh uh sense uh to how we can basically use uh the um, how, how can I call it? To basically use these alterations or these changes brought about by technology, brought about by uh uh especially technology insofar as work is concerned, to really change policies. So I'll start with uh Ms. Luis Vidal, I think Vice President of the Women and Gender Equality in Chile. And um so I think perhaps what I got from your presentation was more the, you, you talked of how technology can provide opportunities to deal with marginalization. And, and I think it couldn't be more straightforward and true than that. That often than not, when we talk about technology, especially artificial intelligence, most of us got a bit, get a bit concerned more than look at the opportunities that are provided for by artificial intelligence as far as uh we can use. My speaking, my speaking time is, is up. So you talked about that we can leverage on technology to actually deal with marginalization and I think I couldn't agree more. I'm gonna have to run through the, the points here. I have to wrap up. And then Ms. Maria as well, uh Regional Director for Latin America. Uh, I think your message was very straightforward. We need to have another conversation about women issues, especially a big conference like the one that we had before, where we'll be able to demonstrate the role that women can basically play insofar as assisting us in the social protection programs, especially when it comes to care. So I think I don't want to dilute what you say beyond that. And Ms. Saru, that was, wow. So it was very interesting. You provided so many uh approaches insofar as trying to bring the youth uh into the conversation, uh as they are quite marginalized. You talked of, of, of the interventions and balancing uh what we can do and what we cannot do. So I'm, I'm not going to enumerate the inclusive strategies that you've talked about, but I'll, I'll finish off with uh Robert, I think Halep, representative of the Indigenous people. Uh I mean, it, it pains us that we don't have enough time to really get into details about how the marginalization of uh of Indigenous people are concerned. And I think for me, especially coming from Botswana, this has always been quite difficult for us to really come up with specific policies, but more importantly, implement those policies that try to deal with marginalization within Indigenous groups. So uh political will has been across cutting issues throughout our presentation and that it is needed to ensure that these policies that try to address marginalization are quite implemented. We don't just talk about them, but we do something about them. So finally, uh, it is my belief that social protection interventions are, are known one size fits all and are more effective when they are developed to uh match the current situation regarding the social fiscal and economic policy landscape of each and every country. Regardless of, of, of understanding these, of course, challenges still remain in terms of the implementation of the social protection uh uh programs, they, challenges on data, challenges on effective and social registry, you know, modernizing and, and, and declining uh system or failure of delivery systems of these social uh uh protection policies as well. So with that said, I'm going to conclude by saying that the future of work is quite optimistic with a promise for robust, for robustness, inclusivity, justice and morally astute decisions. And as such, it provides a template to reassess our social protection uh policies. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you very much. With that, I don't, I'm not sure I did a good time in timekeeping, but a, a good job in timekeeping, but I would like to give back the floor to the Chair, Your Excellency. The te- the, the floor is yours. Thank you.
I thank you very much, Gina, for skillfully moderating uh the panel. I also uh thank distinguished panelists for their contribution. I now open uh the floor for interactive discussion. Uh participants wishing to take the floor, I invited uh to raise uh their nameplates. I would also uh like to acknowledge that I got strict marching orders from Paula that we need to finish uh the third round table uh before noon. And ladies and gentlemen, it's seventeen past eleven at the moment. Uh so uh I would kindly ask you uh to keep uh your remarks within uh two to three minutes. Uh I thank you very much. And now I give the floor uh to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. UK, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh Chair. Um thank you to you and to the moderator and to all of the panelists for another very stimulating conversation, discussion, and good morning to all colleagues. Um I, I will be brief. I don't have set remarks, um so I will try and be as brief as I can. Um, uh last November, uh the Prime Minister, the UK Prime Minister, launched what is called the New White Paper on International Development for the UK, which essentially sets out our policy approach uh until the end of the decade, until twenty thirty. And I have to say, refreshing my familiarity with the document last night, I was heartened to see that it very clearly states that social protection should be at the center of international development, humanitarian and climate efforts, and that the case for more investment in social protection has never been stronger. This includes protections for workers like maternity benefits and paid sick leave, health insurance and regular periodic cash transfers for vulnerable children, people with a disability and older people. But to achieve that requires international collective action on policy and financing at scale, including support to protect social spending, increase domestic revenue mobilization and budget allocations to social protection and strengthen and expand contributory systems, which I think points to the need and the value of the World Social Summit in twenty twenty five. Now, of course, um COVID nineteen was the ultimate stress test of social protection systems, leading to a global scale up of measures to reduce the economic hardship people faced because of the pandemic. But it also demonstrated the urgent need to strengthen systems and fill gaps in coverage, particularly for groups such as informal workers and the potential to do more to prevent and respond to poverty, humanitarian need and climate risk. So with that in mind, I would be very interested in views from the panel on their key lessons learned from the pandemic that should inform our thinking in the run-up to the Summit of the Future and to the proposed World Social Summit. And then if I may, just a very quick reflection on the remarks of uh Mr. Samavia. I have to say, returning to New York after twenty years, I was very struck that the Copenhagen Agenda seems to be less prominent in the collective UN consciousness than the agendas of the other major conferences of the nineteen nineties. And when you think about the three pillars of social development, there is very rightly a strong focus on the economic and the environmental in New, in our work in New York, and I think more broadly, less on the social development. Um, why do you think that is and how do we raise it back up, the political agenda, and give it the attention it so urgently needs? Thank you very much.
Uh I thank you uh very much. Uh because of short available time, I'm now closing uh the list of speakers. Next on my list is Costa Rica, to be followed by Philippines. Costa Rica, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I would be very relieved. Well, uh, let me switch to Spanish.
This panel has certainly been extremely useful because it has allowed us to hear from perspectives from different people about the various changes that are underway in the labor market and the accelerated technological revolution that is underway, which has had disruptions on the labor market and affected many people in different ways already. I think given this context, which is characterized by unpredictability, it's very important that countries have agile systems in place to provide social protection for people, in particular the most vulnerable, so that people can adapt to these changing conditions, so that nobody is left behind. It would be a major challenge to redesign policies in line with the technological changes that will be to come, so that people can be provided with high-quality jobs and also so that people can have the ability to re-skill and engage in vocational training. And we must also invest in those sectors that have traditionally been somewhat marginalized. It's very important to, to invest in these sectors so that we can equip ourselves for the effects of technological change that will be to come in the future. And this is something that the UN has to be engaged in. Thank you.
I thank you very much. And uh I give the floor to Philippines, to be followed by Tunisia. Philippines, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um first, a quick thank you to our host, uh the Government of Chile. And uh we commend uh as well um uh the President of ECOSOC um and Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean for this meeting. Our world of work keeps transforming. Whether the challenge is climate change, evolving demographics, industrial restructuring or the disruptive impacts of emerging technologies such as AI, our approach puts people, in particular their welfare and human dignity, at the center. Our policies are aimed at enhancing economic, natural and social capital towards sustaining human well-being over time, including those in geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas. We recently signed the Philippines' U- UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight, which charts the areas of cooperation between the Philippines and the UN. This new generation framework is anchored upon our national priorities embodied in the Philippine Development Plan for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. Uh it's called Ambition Natin twenty twenty four and the President's uh eight-point socio-economic agenda. It brings to the fore the best practices that have enabled UN programs to achieve meaning, meaningful impact on the lives of Filipinos and also the reforms in the UN development system aimed at fostering national ownership, synergy, coordination of UN programs and projects in the country. One of the main uh outcome priorities and visions that by twenty twenty eight, all Filipinos would benefit from a more integrated, innovative, inclusive and sustainable economy that generates decent work and livelihood opportunities. This aligns with our government's priority to create high-quality and high-paying jobs to address the rising issues of vulnerable employment, particularly among self-employed and unpaid family workers and migrants. To sustain this momentum, the country is focusing on improving our business climate to generate investments for high-quality and high-paying jobs. We prioritize expanding uh upskilling and retooling programs to improve our labor market performance. These are critical for members of the workforce, workforce who are in vulnerable employment situations and who urgently need to improve their employability, allowing them to move across industries and occupations. We also recently launched the National Innovation Agenda and Strategy Document, which serves as our blueprint for establishing a dynamic, innovative ecosystem, equipping our workforce with twenty-first century skills that en- enhance their employability. We believe that the cost of upskilling migrant workers, including seafarers and those in the energy sectors and other prof- professionals for greening global industries should be a shared endeavor between governments and industries, as well as the sending and receiving countries. Um the future work of work is here before us. Uh train, we've talked a lot about the value of training programs being a tool for addressing uh skills gaps. But to ensure that the march of progress leaves no one behind, we have to be creative, agile, resilient and consistent in adopting best practices and raising the standards for the ethical, responsible and ethical and responsible use of technology for promoting decent work and for providing social protection. It is in walking the talk, or in, in the words of uh Ms. Halep, um having the political will to implement uh policies that we um show consistency, build credibility and serve as each other's role model in contributing to our vision for the future of work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Tunisia, to be followed by USA. Please keep uh your remarks within two minutes. Tunisia, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As I take the floor for the first time in my uh national capacity, I would like to thank the Government of Chile for organizing this meeting and I would like also to commend the efforts of our uh President, the President of ECOSOC, uh my colleague Ambassador Paula. And I thank the panelists for their insightful presentations and for all the issues that they have uh raised. It is essential uh to start by the present of the uh work, labor uh of, of, of the world, uh world of labor. And in addition to skills, training and education, a special focus is needed on inequality. a special focus is needed on inequalities and specific groups, especially women, girls, youth, migrants and persons with disabilities, to guarantee a future of work which is inclusive and sustainable. We cannot go forward with all the persistent inequalities and vulnerabilities, especially gender gaps, digital divide and financing for development difficulties. In a very connected world and in the current complex global context, it is essential to close the digital divide so that the benefits of the new technologies reach the largest number of people. And this requires, as some of the panelists have mentioned, more international cooperation and solidarity. An inclusive and sustainable global society cannot be achieved while the abnormalities of the labor market persist. In this connection, I have a question to the panelists about what measures should be taken to address the trend of informal sector in which millions were plunged, especially in developing countries due to the pandemic and lack of access to new technologies. And I think which is characterized by a conspicuous lack of legal protection and social protection and security guarantees, and which is a huge barrier to the dream of accession of decent work and sustainability for all. I thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to USA, to be followed by France.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I'd also like to join others in just very sincere thanks to Ambassador Navias for having the vision to bring us all together and for her and her government welcoming us so warmly in this beautiful capital. I think I, among others, certainly intend to come back at some point and have a little more time to enjoy all that Chile has to offer. And what a very important discussion we've had this morning. I've certainly learned an awful lot. As we heard yesterday, the internet and digital technologies are powerful catalysts for sustainable development and dynamic platforms that can be used to advance greater social and civic inclusion and respect for human rights. They're neither inherently good nor inherently evil. The same potential to create economic opportunity and development can lead or exacerbate inequality and marginalization. The reality is, we live in a world where disparities are common and where many people continue to be left behind. And when anyone is left behind, progress is neither truly achieved nor sustainable. This is why inclusivity must continue to be at the core of all that we do. In the twenty-first century, no economy can get ahead if half of its population is left behind. In our rapidly modernizing global economy, President Biden is committed to ensuring women are prepared for and part of the industries of the future. In an effort to close the gender digital divide, we launched the Women in Digital Economy Fund in March 2023. The fund is a pooled partnership that identifies, directly funds and accelerates proven solutions to close the gender digital divide, thereby improving women's economic security. In November, Vice President Harris announced the launch of the Women in the Sustainable Economy Initiative, which aims to improve women's access to employment, training and leadership roles in financing in the green and blue industries. Colleagues, an additional reason for persistent income inequality and wealth inequality is declining union representation, which is associated with deepening economic inequality, stagnant real wages and the shrinking of the middle class. Worker empowerment is essential to the advancement of sustainable economic growth, inclusive international development, human rights, democratic resilience and fair competition. That's why the United States established a task force on worker organizing and empowerment, a government-wide effort to promote policies, programs and practices to help more workers organize and successfully bargain with their employers. Moreover, international initiatives like the Multilateral Partnership for Organizing Worker Empowerment and Rights, or EMPOWER, provided a valuable template for multi-stakeholder approaches to help countries. EMPOWER aims to promote worker organization and unionization, ensure workers can help shape public policy and guarantee workers are protected under ILO fundamental principles. Bilateral initiatives have great potential as well, such as the recently announced US-Brazil partnership for workers' rights announced by President Biden and President Lula during last year's High Level Week. We are committed to ensuring high labor standards, bringing workers' voices to the decision-making table and enforcing rules against unfair labor practices, not just in the United States but around the world. We look forward to our continued partnership and collaboration with all of you to advance these shared goals. Thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to France, to be followed by New Zealand.
Thank you very much for giving the floor. I'd also like to thank the panelists for sharing their dreams with us and also the concrete actions that are being undertaken, that need to be undertaken. France would also like to thank Chile for convening this conference, which is an important stage to prepare the organization for the Summit of 2025, which should focus on the social pillar of social development. France would like to reiterate its support to our common agenda of the Secretary General and his project for a new social contract. France also welcomes the role played by the ILO, tasked with promoting the social aspect of this within the UN and particularly promoting human rights at work and decent work too. France echoes the appeal extended by Juan Somavia to call on states present here today to mobilize or to negotiate resolutions to prepare for the Social Summit in 2025. Thank you very much.
I thank you very much. And I give the floor to New Zealand, to be followed by Bangladesh.
Tenakoto Katoa Mari Mari. New Zealand wishes to thank Chile for hosting this innovative meeting on a subject that concerns us all. We'd also like to acknowledge the energetic leadership of Ambassador Navias as President of ECOSOC. We commend Chile for injecting renewed energy and reminding us that the work that we do must have impact on the communities that we serve. New Zealand recognizes that the future of work is being shaped by global megatrends, including technological changes, demographic change, globalization and climate change. These trends affect what kind of work is done, who does it, where and how it's done. These trends present opportunities to create more and better jobs, to increase productivity, raise living standards and well-being and achieve greater equity and economic, social and environmental sustainability. The decisions that we take in this space will impact our economic trajectory and shape the resilience of our labor market for the coming years. There are also challenges as the skills required to keep pace shift rapidly, tasks become increasingly automated and modes of workplace organization change. These trends have the potential to impact incoming quality and employment standards. Digitization brings with it many opportunities but also presents heightened risks to personal and professional privacy rights. In New Zealand, the government is focused on lifting productivity and economic growth to increase living standards and bring more people into the labor force. Key to this work will be creating suitable conditions for businesses to innovate and respond to the sorts of trends we have heard about today. For New Zealand, this will include improving labor market flexibility to adapt to rapid changes and absorb shocks and supporting people into decent and sustainable employment. For young people in particular, the government plans to use community providers to support young job seekers with a job coach, develop a plan to address young people's barriers to employment and undertake proper needs assessments to help them find suitable work. We will also, as always, work with our friends in the Pacific, recognizing that the impact our policies can have beyond our own borders and the far-reaching impact of global megatrends.
In conclusion, we'd once again like to thank Chile for the excellent organization of this conference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I give the floor to Bangladesh, to be followed by Guatemala. Bangladesh, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, Madam Moderator, Excellencies, distinguished colleagues. I thank the keynote speaker and panelist for sharing their useful thoughts and insights. I want to highlight four points on what we understand shaping a future of decent work and social protection for all means. First, we all agree that technology will continue to shape the future of work. Many jobs considered essential today will become irrelevant tomorrow. To protect the vulnerable workers and prepare citizens, the government of Bangladesh is implementing a digital Bangladesh vision that emphasizes resilience and adaptability by focusing on digitalization of public services, scaling workers with ICT and STEM education, digital content creation, e-commerce and marketing and lifelong learning opportunities, among others. Second, many speakers today and yesterday talked about digital and knowledge divides that exist between and within countries, between the rural and urban population, among youth, older and disabled persons and notably between genders. Unless we can effectively bridge these divides using a multidimensional approach that includes accessibility, affordability, language, training and capacity building, there will be no inclusivity. As people in developing countries will continue to fail to participate in and benefit from the digitalization of global economies. Third, when we talk about protecting rights of workers, we often talk about physical workspace. But given that in future, many important jobs will shift online, we need to ensure that the same rights that people have offline are also protected online. Societal protection must embrace those who work online, particularly women and girls, the youth, the poor and the marginalized, so that online work is safe and free from abuses, bullying and cyber crimes of all sorts. Fourth, and finally, Mr. Chair, an effective multidimensional partnership is essential, both to protect future jobs and societal protection of workers. And this is not a traditional government-to-government partnerships, but rather a multi-stakeholder collaboration at partnerships among member states, civil society, industry and the private sector, the scientific community, the United Nations entities and other stakeholders. We need to engage with multilateral financial institutions and negotiate how they can invest in skill development, job creation and job retention. We need to engage with industries and the private sector. Most jobs and job growths and technological innovations are taking place for protection of workers from exploitation, personal data protection and sharing with governments some of the revenues and values industry are creating by exploiting personal data and technology in a digitally connected global economy. We hope that these issues are addressed by future multilateral summits, including the Summit of the Future and the World Social Summit. I thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Guatemala, to be followed by Belgium.
Thank you, Chairman. As I'm taking the floor for the first time, I would also like to thank the President of ECOSOC, the government of Chile and ECCLAC for inviting us to this special meeting, which is a critical meeting as we prepare for the Summit of the Future and the Global Social Summit, as has already been said. The three round tables have been very useful to allow member states to engage in a discussion and to take note of good practices. As has been said, we have to recognize that the world is quite far from attaining the SDGs, in particular, SDG aid on decent jobs and economic growth. And we're more than halfway since, to go to 2030. There are major persistent challenges in the labor market that are impacted by new technologies, which pose new challenges for our country's economic growth. And there are significant costs in terms of job losses, and this may have social harm. On new technologies, they will certainly have a major impact on the structure of our economies and therefore on the structure of the labor markets as well. That is why we have promoted the design and of proposals on the responsible use of new technologies, including artificial intelligence. We aim to establish appropriate governance on new AI tools to ensure that they are appropriately regulated to ensure citizens' well-being. This also means investing in training for young people to offer high-quality education in science and technology, together with efforts to invest in the technological domain to allow for the establishment of specialized jobs to satisfy the enormous demand for these skills. We also need to bear in mind the regional perspective and to build on this regional progress, on the establishment of relevant public policies. The discussions point out, laid out in point five of the regional chapter, are particularly pertinent in this part. Each country needs to have the requisite tools in place to deal with all of these phenomena, including protecting critical infrastructure. We also need to have appropriate monitoring of the ethical use of data and information and to see if the algorithms, to check if the algorithms are being used fairly. As many panelists have said, we need to ensure that we can update our digital communication tools, improve connectivity, so that we can support a modern competitive economy at the global level. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the main causes of migration today is people are searching for new opportunities and jobs. And that is why we need to have a coordinated approach to migration so that we can guarantee safe and orderly and regular migratory flows, fully supporting the human rights of all people, regardless of their migratory status. Looking at the links between migration and the labor market without forgetting the fact that human rights of migrants must be upheld at all times. We must also bear in mind the rights of indigenous peoples, persons with disabilities, older persons, women and migrants. These are the most vulnerable parts of our society. They must be part and parcel of any response we have to come up with, to grapple with new technologies. Thank you.
I thank you. I give the floor to Belgium, to be followed by Haiti. And I remind delegates of the two-minute limit. Belgium, you have the floor.
Thanks a lot, Chair, for giving me the floor. Y muchas gracias al presidente de la ECOSOC.
I thank the President of ECOSOC, Ambassador Navias and her team for gathering us together here in Santiago.
The past two days underlined the importance of decent work for a changing labor market and our shared responsibilities between governments, workers and employers to tackle these changes. As co-chair of the Group of Friends on Decent Work, together with Morocco, it will come as no surprise to anyone that advancing decent work is a Belgian priority, and this in a holistic approach along four pillars. It is not only the work as such that needs to be decent, but also social dialogue, labor laws and standards and social protection. In the interest of time, I will limit my remarks to that last one. Forty percent of all workers, or about two billion people, have informal jobs and no access to social protection. For all these employees, the smallest setback often results in a catastrophe. By extending social protection systems, we want to guarantee income security for individuals, but also lifelong access to healthcare. As many panelists have mentioned over the past two days, it is time to put words into action. Our global engagement needs to be translated into local implementation, which is what Belgium is doing through development programs with our partner countries, mainly in Africa, focused on decent work and social protection. The added value this brings to local communities is very clear. Decent work works. On the global level, we announced our financial support to the Global Accelerator for Decent Work and Social Protection last September as an SDG high-impact initiative. This aim is to create at least four hundred million decent jobs, primarily in the green, digital and care economies. This initiative will also extend social protection coverage to the over four billion currently excluded. In this regard, the Global Accelerator confirms the central role of decent work in achieving the SDGs, and this in a one-UN spirit. And I will leave it at that, Chair, in the interest of time. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your understanding. I give the floor to Haiti, to be followed by Mexico.
Merci.
Thank you very much, President. President, first of all, I would like to commend this relevant initiative organizing under the Chilean presidency of ECOSOC, this special meeting. And I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to the government of Chile and ECOSOC and ECCLAC for their generous for their generous financial contribution to allow the participation of permanent representatives of member states from LDCs, small island developing states and landlocked developing states to participate in this meeting. I would like to warmly congratulate you on the quality of the concept note and also the interventions, which accurately represent the state of the markets around the world, focusing on the unprecedented changes underway because of certain number of important factors, such as technological progress, economic integration and the green transition. There's no doubt at all that the conclusions and discussions that we have here will fuel and support our future discussions and decisions in terms of the Summit of the Future that will be held this year and also the Global Social Summit, summit which will be held in 2025. SDG eight, President, highlights the importance of ongoing economic growth that is shared and sustainable so that everyone can have a decent and good-quality job. Indeed, this objective of the 2030 agenda seeks to eradicate indecent work and also support all workers and promote the development of opportunities, training and jobs for future generations, taking into account the requirements and demands of these sustainable jobs. Here, we must recall that SDG eight also seeks to foster strengthened global cooperation to support growth and decent work in developing countries in choosing increased assistance for trade and development-focused policies and a global policy for youth employment. However, given the rapid changes on the labor market and that transformations can provide significant benefits, but adaptation can be difficult for some, particularly the most vulnerable countries, who have a large number of unqualified workers. Here, we need to think together about the future of work towards a productive, inclusive and sustainable global society, which, of course, having a global approach to development would be required, which is in line with multilateralism and is strengthened as a key component to guarantee the future that we want and so that we can collectively address the major challenges before us. These challenges are having a significant impact on the work, on work, as well as conflicts, wars, the climate crisis, poverty, inequality, rising energy and food prices, unemployment and the effects of COVID-19. According to the World Bank in April 2023 and a note on jobs, employment and development, good-quality jobs and access to them is the best way for a country to graduate from poverty. This means that the development of a productive private sector with fair competition guarantees and provides jobs for everyone is crucial to put an end to extreme poverty. Employment is at the heart of development and World Bank experts believes that the limited number of quality jobs remains one of the most urgent problems that developing countries, particularly low-income countries, are facing, particularly given their population growth. And we see if we have a future with decent work for all, we are to achieve this. It's important for all stakeholders, government, businesses, IFIs and other sectors, is important for them to mobilize all strategies that they have available to put to establish and undertake measures to improve the quality of jobs, particularly through economic transformation for developing countries and also, on the other hand, to ensure a just and equitable transition towards greener economies while facilitating access for all to technologies as a driver of transformation. Thank you very much.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Spain to be followed by Peru. Colleagues, two minutes limit, please.
Thank you, sir. Spain thinks that if we are to successfully overcome these challenges that we're facing, we need to strengthen the social dimension. To have an ecological and social transition, we need to make sure that we have the digital, social and environmental transitions working hand in hand. We support the Global Accelerator for Jobs. We have been the main contributor to the fund to support decent jobs. In our common agenda, the Secretary-General proposes that we have more sustainable and resilient systems. With Chile, Senegal and other countries, we submitted a resolution on the social economy in the last session of the General Assembly to foster inclusion and to uphold people's rights at work. We support there being a social summit in 2025. We also hope that the summit will adopt an ambitious political declaration, which will pave the way forward and also address some of the challenges that have been emerging in recent years. This must involve strengthening labor rights and upholding human rights. None of this will be possible unless we multiply the available financial resources to address the precarious financial position of many developing countries. That is why we're looking forward to the fourth Financing for Development Conference in 2025. This will help us to uphold the promise of the 2030 agenda, including the social dimension. We'll need to have a high level of ambition. You can rest assured that we will be doing our utmost to attain these goals.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Peru to be followed by Czechia.
Thank you. In terms of our policy on decent jobs, we have been focusing on helping the most vulnerable groups, such as women, people with disabilities, young people and migrants. One of the goals we have is that they have a labor contract, a fair wage with health insurance, a pension, and that they do not work excessive hours and that we have inclusive policies in place. And this involves a gradual reduction in the degree of informal work. These are the goals we have. And we don't want this to remain a dream. We can't simply cushion this dream with a comfortable pillow. We have to actually act on trying to make it a reality. Given the current context and the criteria that determine the state's work, which is ultimately to act on behalf of everybody, to all citizens, we need to look at how the macroeconomic data are trending and act on investing in the most critical areas. We also need to enhance productivity. We need to look at social trends as well. And we also need to look at how we're working with the private sector. We also need to ensure that we increase people's skills so that they are more eligible for the amenable jobs. We also need to reconcile supply and demand. We need to increase the generation of formal jobs. Fourthly, we need to broaden access to social protection and social benefits for people. We need to increase equality within the potential labor force. And of course, we also need to bring about an appropriate labor environment. This means potentially carrying out some quite radical changes in our societies. We've heard a great deal today about a dream. And of course, we will share that dream. But something is missing in that dream. A few things are missing. We need commitment. We need determination. We need concrete orientation in the form of public policy. And we need determination on the part of states and entities such as ECOSOC to make that dream a reality. Thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Czechia to be followed by Cabo Verde.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dear colleagues, today, as we discuss the future of work and more importantly, ensuring decent work and social protection for all, I'd like to emphasize the significance of social dialogue. Social dialogue, in simple terms, means open and constructive conversations among all parties involved in the global challenges and opportunities shaping our societies, economies and lives. Tripartite and bilateral social dialogue and collective bargaining are powerful tools for analyzing, defining and implementing policies that cater to the needs of both employers and workers in this ever-changing environment. Furthermore, the consensus and support of these social partners are not only essential for crafting informed and realistic policies, but also, more importantly, for ensuring their successful implementation. Regular, transparent and inclusive dialogues between these social partners can foster trust and contribute to more successful and balanced adaptation processes in the face of the numerous changes our world is undergoing. In essence, social dialogue serves as an ideal tool to manage the risks and opportunities brought about by environmental and digital advancements. This includes addressing the skill development of workers, identifying the need for upskilling and reskilling to ensure smoothing their transitions in the labor market. It also involves supporting fair wages and decent working conditions, including occupational safety and health and addressing energy efficiency within enterprises. In conclusion, it is safe to say that social dialogue is a practical approach that brings people together to find solutions that benefit us all. It is a means to shape a future where work is not only productive, but also inclusive and just. I thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Cabo Verde to be followed by Colombia.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Moderator, panelists. Thank you also for your very passionate views on today's topic. It was underlined by all how interlinked the three dimensions of work are: the economic aspect, the social issues and also the environmental impact. The role of women and the need to approach gender equality and empowerment of women and girls at all levels are essential if we want the shift of work in the future towards more inclusive and just job opportunities. Challenges are particularly huge for developing countries like my own, Cabo Verde. Although a big ocean state, we are also a tiny African and Sahelian city. Gender equality and empowerment of women and girls needs to be seriously looked at involving youth as well. And we had a very nice intervention on that specific topic. The guidelines contained in Agenda 2030, the future that we want and Beijing Plan of Action are on the table. But we don't need only words. We need to implement, to achieve sustainable and inclusive economic growth and shared prosperity through a future with decent work for all. I think we will all leave this room today very inspired by the various presentations and interventions and ready to dream along and to work to transform the dreams into reality and to bring decent work, social billing and also the power to dream back to we, the people, main purpose of the UN and the values we are all committed to. Cabo Verde is very keen of the issues we approached today. And we look forward to partners and work on this on the Summit of the Future and the Social Summit and also work with all around this table and in particular with the colleagues back in New York. Thank you.
I thank you very much, colleagues. Minister of Foreign Affairs is with us, waiting for the key messages and conclusion and closing sessions. So please restrain yourselves to one minute each. Colombia, you have the floor to be followed by Uruguay.
Thank you. Our government, through the National Development Plan, has put decent work as a catalyst for peace in our country. And that is the hinge for us to overcome multidimensional poverty, as well as to close social gaps and achieve gender equality. Colombia remains committed to its goal to achieve full employment and to provide decent jobs under a new development model. This model must put the care system at the heart of it in order to reduce poverty and to close social gaps. This is a common goal that we all share in our society. Despite the difficult current reality, this goal must contain a more humane development perspective. It must also be more sustainable. It must provide citizens with perspectives for a decent and dignified life, in particular those who are most vulnerable. The Global Social Summit, which is proposed to be held in 2025, is an opportunity for us to improve international coordination and cooperation when it comes to strengthening decent jobs as a way of reducing poverty and inequality and promoting inclusion. We agree that the Copenhagen Declaration should be the starting point for our discussions. And we think that this could be updated and improved so that it better meets the requirements of our current age and the 2030 agenda, as well as the increasing social needs as a consequence of the new multiple crises that the current world is facing. Thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Egypt to be followed by Russian Federation, Turkey and Paraguay. Please, one minute each. Egypt, you have the floor.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Uruguay. Uruguay, you have the floor.
Problem here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like very much to read some points very quickly that the colleagues and speakers have mentioned, but I think they are very important and I would like to mention them and additionally some other points. Among the categories that necessitate and need support, not only youth, but also elderly people, people with disability and women-supporting families or breadwinner women. Also, equality between genders and protection of women in the environment of work against violence and harassment. It's important also to minimize the gap, the technological gap between advanced and developed countries and developing countries for to enhance the ability to achieve the goals of development goals. Applying the technology and artificial intelligence should be in the first place with the aim to achieve progress for humanity and achieve prosperity for humanity, not to replace manpower. We should also, as relevant to developing countries, we should pay attention to crisis and, present crisis and crisis and catastrophes that are, that happened a while ago and, and at the moment, and their effects on this, on the ability of these countries, of the developing countries, and its ability to follow the parameters needed, the international parameters to apply the, to apply for the new, for the transfer to the digital jobs. Elimination of children's work. Founding a reference, an international reference for the new, for the new patterns of jobs in the, in the shade of the technological revolution. Considering establishing an observatory for digital technology to, in order also to, to, to share lessons learned, supporting and enhancing technical and financial support as well as investments in developing countries to enhance their abilities for just the transition from jobs, from traditional jobs. Last thing, I would like to say that Egypt just terminated preparing a draft strategy, national strategy for the jobs of the future in accordance with the recent developments. Thank you very much, ECOSOC. Thank you very much, DEPAL, and congratulations for the 75th anniversary. Thank you very much, Chile.
Thank you very much. I give the floor to Uruguay to be followed by Russian Federation.
Thank you very much. I wanted to come back to a issue that was raised by colleagues. Social cooperation in order to achieve goals in terms of decent work. Over the last 20 years, our country has created, been creating a tripartite system for collective negotiation to negotiate salaries and employment conditions. Of course, nothing's perfect, but I think that this model has worked very, quite well in our country. Of course, you can, there's always things to look at from a critical angle, but I think this system has improved working conditions, access to jobs, and also allowed to a certain extent, peace, social peace. In terms of women now, on the legal front, we have a protection, a good quality protection system in Uruguay. The problem is that we have equality on paper. But if we look at what's happening on the labor market in terms of access to jobs, potential career development opportunities, et cetera. Yes, women face problems. I'll conclude, we must indeed fight so that women can no longer be discriminated against and so that existing norms can be applied. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We can implement existing norms to achieve equality.
Permission to be followed by Turkey and Paraguay, please, one minute each.
President, excellencies, I'll be as brief as possible. Russia agrees that emerging technologies, of course, should have a human face and assist the achievement of SDGs, mainly eradicating poverty and inequality. The current jobs required a high level of salary, and therefore automation is one of the conditions for increasing salary of decisions. Inequality is something that states can help address. In Russia, this inequality is tied to social protection of families, particularly with many children. So we have separate programs for youth employment who are just starting out on the jobs market. In 2022, Russia started to implement plans and activities to increase the level of employment. The future decent work in our country is something that we see as part of regional integration processes. In Turalia, the Eurasian Economic Union already has a single labor market, and they are creating a digital ecosystem for the Eurasian labor market. I'd also like to recall that the ILO recommends the development of an international system for regulating questions of labor on digital platforms. We believe that moving towards this is, i.e. harmonizing integration processes of regional organizations will, me, will help us achieve SDGA, SDG eight. On behalf of the Russian Federation, I'd like to reiterate our thanks to the government of Chile, the opportunity to discuss together pressing issues of labor here in this very hospitable country. Thank you very much indeed.
I thank you very much, and I give the floor to Turkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Decent work and social protection are safety nets that ensures no one is left behind in times of economic challenges, health crisis, and other unfortunate circumstances. Turkey has undertaken several initiative samples, the measures to leverage emerging technologies for poverty reduction, addressing inequality and promoting the labor market, inclusion of women and disadvantaged groups. Some of our companies in Turkey have embraced flexible work policies, including remote work options and flexible hours, which is also contributing to the inclusion of women and individuals from disadvantaged groups in the labor market. Turkey has been implementing programs to encourage women and disadvantaged groups to pursue education and careers in STEM fields to create a more diverse and inclusive workforce in technology-related sectors. We have been implementing various e-government services, streamlining public service delivery and reducing bureaucracy. Last but not least, we have been implementing policies to support the growth of technology startup ecosystem. We are further committed to utilizing the potential of emerging technologies to promote inclusivity, to reduce poverty and to address inequalities. Thank you.
I thank you very much. I give the floor to Paraguay to be followed by Mexico. Mexico is our last speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. In line with your request, I'll be very brief. Given the technological progress that we have seen and the high degree of automation that has been happening in line with AI, it's quite clear that education and training will be critical in the forthcoming years so that we can overcome challenges in the labor market in the short, medium and long term. This has to involve the, has to include the involvement of women, indigenous peoples and disadvantaged groups. In spite of all of the progress that has been made to date, fully complying with the goals that have been laid out in terms of employment remains a challenge for public policies in our countries, and this in the short, medium and long term. We need to have a multiple, multi-pronged approach. And public policy has to be tailored to the changes that are happening very quickly so that more and better decent jobs can be created. We must ensure the inclusion of women and disadvantaged groups within the labor market. The transition towards formality and less precarious jobs is also very important. International cooperation is also of paramount importance so that we can overcome this challenge. Having access to technological progress without restrictions is critical so that we can ensure we do leave no one behind, in line with the 2030 agenda for sustainable development. Thank you.
I thank you very much, and I give the floor to Mexico.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to make two points. First of all, in line with what we had the opportunity to discuss in this forum, the use of technology with a gender perspective also contributes to help us to move towards a more fair society. And in line with the Buenos Aires commitment and the various international commitments, we must also include the gender perspective into digital policies in the design of technology so that we can get rid of barriers to entry. This means not just developing digital tools that are geared towards training women, but also including women as well as young people and girls in decision-making and when public policy is actually designed and implemented. We invite all states to do this. Mexico is very committed to do this as we look towards the next Women's Conference that will be held in Mexico next year. Thank you.
I thank you very much. We had some questions raised during the discussion, however, we do not have time to respond them, so I ask you after the session for them to be addressed bilaterally. I thank very much to Madam Moderator, to all distinguished panelists for sharing their views with us. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, dear guests, we have thus concluded round table three. We will now very briefly pause in order to rearrange the podium. Please stay on your places, and I thank you very much for a very productive discussion.
Se reanuda, se reanuda la reunión.
The meeting is resumed. S distinguished ministers, your excellencies, distinguished delegates and guests. We have reached the concluding part of the Special Meeting of the Economic and Social Council on the Future of Work Towards a Productive, Inclusive and Sustainable Global Society. I now invite His Excellency Bob Ray, Vice President of the Economic and Social Council, to introduce key messages from the discussions that have taken place over the past day and a half. Ambassador Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Let me congratulate you, Paula, for your wonderful hosting of this conference and Foreign Minister, thank you for sending Paula to New York to provide us with such inspiration and leadership. It's deeply appreciated. Colleagues, I, I am very aware of the timeframe, but I just wanted to say a few words to pride my best with the assistance of my friends from UNDSSN and others involved in the conference, the wonderful conclusions. It's been an extraordinary time for us. Many of us spent our first day visiting a factory that was focusing on sustainability, on the circular economy, on leaving things better than what was found, and creating a very efficient business with well-paying jobs at the same time. And I think it was a good way for us to start because we, I think, saw at firsthand how productive employment and decent work can be a catalyst for the achievement of all the other SDGs. Obstacles to the creation of decent work put poverty eradication and the reduction of inequality and all of the SDGs at risk. We're reminded that work is not a commodity, but it is a source of personal dignity, family stability and peaceful societies, as well as prosperous societies. It is a key pillar of strong social partnerships. But we can all agree that the future of work, just like the future of our economies, the future of the natural world and the future of our societies, is not predetermined. The best way to predict the future, we were told today by Mr. Somovia, is to invent it, and he's right. We must put our principles and the phrase that's found in the very beginning of the Charter, we, the peoples of the United Nations. We must put both principles and people at the heart of our decisions. Many of you emphasized how the current multiple crises, including COVID-19, climate change, growing conflicts and macroeconomic instability have helped to turn the world upside down. These crises hit labor markets that are already fragile. Informal employment has been stubbornly high in most developing countries for decades. Other forms of precarious work had been growing well before the current crises. Ironically, we are also seeing a growth of precarious work in advanced economies as well. Managing transformations in the world of work requires a change in our thinking and then a change in our actions. A recognition that decent jobs will not be an automatic outcome of growth or of technological innovation, but that they require concerted action. A willingness to think more about the year 2100. A willingness to embrace what indigenous people in Canada call seven generational thinking, thinking long-term, thinking deep into the future as to what our actions have consequences. And yes, a move away from considering emerging technologies as an end to themselves and towards seeing them as a critical means of improving people's well-being, productivity and to achieving the SDGs. If we do not rethink how we approach the world of work, we risk accelerating and deepening existing inequalities. People at high risk of vulnerability in the labor market, as we heard today, women, young people, low-skilled workers, persons with disabilities, migrants, older persons and indigenous peoples, will pay the price if we do not act together. There's broad agreement that we've heard today on the essential role that quality education, skills training play in adapting to the future work. An unrelating, unrelenting focus on learning must be maintained. Lifelong education must be promoted and social protection systems expanded to manage the technological revolution and adjust an equitable transition towards green economies. Extending more value and providing greater protection to care work that is currently undervalued, underpaid and undertrained can in fact create jobs and trigger new opportunities, particularly for women, to participate in the labor market on terms that are equal and fair. Preparing for the future of work now more than ever also requires closing the digital divide. Yet closing this divide cannot be separated from the energy transition, as much of the global population lacks electricity. Our means must meet the test of sustainability. But let's make no mistake, quality education, skills training and access to digital technologies will not help workers find jobs or escape poverty if there are not enough decent jobs for everyone. We need to find a virtuous circle of economic, environmental and social policies that will meet the test of a sustainability that is deeply and widely shared in all of our societies and all of our countries. While countries must do more, managing changes in the world of work can only be effective with international cooperation. The transformations that will shape the future of work The transformations that will shape the future of work respect no boundaries. We must emphasize what local governments do matters, what national governments do matters, but also what global institutions can do to strengthen processes that will ensure coherence and a much better execution of policy. I also want to emphasize, we saw it today, we heard it today and yesterday, not only did we hear it, we saw it and we felt it. The participation of civil society is critical. It makes a difference. It's what also helps define what ECOSOC does. Because we do not believe that this is only a matter for nation-states. It is also a matter for all of our societies working together. We heard today about the what and also about the how. I think that was a good way of putting that we need our vision, should be bold, but our means must be pragmatic, inventive and share best practices. Throughout the last three days, we've heard about Hernán Santa Cruz. And I think it's important for us to recognize, those of us who are not Chilean, to say that if it were not for Hernán Santa Cruz, we would not have the social rights component so critically a part of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And in fact, one of the great things about the Universal Declaration is that it does not make a distinction between individual rights and freedoms, which are critically important, and social rights, which actually guarantee solidarity. Finally, time is of the essence. We all understand this. To make progress towards inclusive, sustainable societies, rather than let our partnerships unravel, we must act now. We have learned these last three days that social rights and obligations matter. Of course, freedom and equality are important, but so is solidarity. The practical expression of what it is that we owe each other. How we express gratitude for the gifts that have been bestowed on us and our obligations to each other and the generations that are yet to be born. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
I thank Ambassador Ray for his statement. Your excellencies, distinguished delegates and guests, we will now listen to the concluding statements after the excellent summary that Mr. Ray has just provided. First of all, I invite His Excellency Alberto van Clavén Stork, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile, to deliver some closing remarks. Minister, you have the floor. Thank you very much, Madam President. Your excellencies, ambassadors, representatives of member states of ECOSOC, observers, representatives of other organizations present here and civil society organizations, dear friends. I would just like very briefly to thank members states of ECOSOC, the moderators, analysts and civil society for your commitment and participation in a discussion that is challenging, both for states and for the United Nations system as a whole. Against an international backdrop characterized by the effects of climate change, the uptick in regional conflicts, as well as mistrust in multilateralism and the recession of democratic values, the United Nations, together with regional organizations and states, must come up with a coordinated and efficient response. Only through cooperation can we address the current complexities without leaving anyone behind. The role of ECOSOC in this context is of paramount importance. We must be able to use ECOSOC to its full potential. We must advocate substantive agreements being reached to allow us to move towards the full implementation of the SDGs. We must bolster action to counter the effects of climate change and to fulfill the promise to respect all people's human rights. We must maximize this body's role to develop clear, specific guidelines based on our combined experiences. Thus, making the most of the UN system's abilities to help us to achieve the SDGs by 2030. The segments for and special meetings of the council, such as this that is taking place here in Santiago, as well as the broad mechanisms, accessory bodies under the aegis of ECOSOC, are critical in generating debates and helping us to come up with measures as part of a collective response. This meeting, as we have clearly heard, has highlighted the challenges that we have to overcome to ensure decent work for our citizens. We truly value this forum. Our expectations as a host country have been fully met. The roundtables have provided us with an opportunity better to understand the multidimensional changes that are going on and that have an impact on labor markets, as well as the opportunities, challenges and repercussions that there are. The challenges that may prevent people from acquiring decent jobs and achieving social justice. Finally, I would like once again to express my thanks to ECLAC. I would also like to thank the United Nations Development Program, which has supported the hosting of this event from the very beginning and which also, of course, has a very long productive relationship with our country. The Economic and Social Division of the United Nations on DESA and all of the support that we also received from the Department of General Assembly and Conference Management, DGACM, to use UN jargon. I would also like to express my thanks to the interpreters who have done sterling work over the last couple of days. And I would also like to thank ambassadors, delegates, civil society members and the briefers and speakers who have taken part in this meeting and contributed to the success of this meeting and also enriched our debate. On behalf of the government of Chile, I hope that you have had a very good experience during these meetings. And I also hope that in your visit, which unfortunately for many of you will be a very short visit, I hope you've had a very enjoyable visit to our country. And I hope that you also agree that this meeting has been very useful and we do think it has made a very significant contribution to the debate. Thank you all very much. I would like to thank the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile for his statement. I now invite the USG for Economic and Social Affairs, Mr. Lee Junhua, to make a concluding statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Let me start by thanking her Excellency Ms. Paula Navies, President of ECOSOC and the Government of Chile for organizing this special meeting of ECOSOC on this very pressing topic. Your discussions over the past two days have confirmed that the world is not on track to achieving the important goals for full, productive and decent job for all women and men. Last year, the global economic performance registered a moderate growth better than projected at the beginning of the year. However, many developing countries struggled with record-high unemployment. Informal employment remains stubbornly high and economic growth is projected to slow down in many of these countries. Decades of the progress in reducing global inequality and poverty are under severe threat from the socio-economic, geopolitical and environmental crisis that converged upon us. But as reflected in your discussions over the past two days, the pathways to progress do exist. The 2023 SDG Summit Political Declaration provides the roadmap for capitalizing on the transformative levers that can put us on track to achieving SDGs by 2030. Decent work is one of such levers. Employment and decent work remain essential to the people's lives and the functioning of the societies. Ongoing global transformations must and can be managed so that the jobs deliver economic security, equal opportunity and social justice for present and the future generations. This special meeting has been an important milestone for anchoring the decent work firmly within the policy actions for accelerating the SDGs. And 2024 and 25 will provide further opportunities to draw the high-level attentions to the critical nature of decent job for ensuring inclusive and resilient development gains. The upcoming summit of the future will provide an opportunity to reimagine global governance for the 21st century, ensuring it is fit to address the current and emerging challenges. With your guidance, the summit can help to ensure that institutions and governance systems support and change the world of work alongside other necessary transformations. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, member states are now considering and positively discussing the possibility of holding a social summit in 2025. A social summit could leverage the momentum of the SDG Summit and the Summit of the Future to move forward the people-centered solutions that will accelerate the progress towards the SDGs from here to 2030 and help safeguard such progress in the long run. It could generate political will to increase investments in decent work, education, social protection, health and infrastructure. We in UNDSS stand ready to provide evident-driven solutions that inform the member states deliberations leading to these summits and their outcomes that can drive impactful solutions. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, achieving decent work for all is not just a standalone goal for 2030 agenda. It is a catalyst for the broader positive change. Productive and decent jobs can spark the trust in institutions and is necessary to eradicate poverty, reduce inequality and promote peaceful and stable societies. Each step that we are going to take to promote decent work brings us closer to the brighter future where the SDGs are not just aspirations, but tangible realities, making the world a better place for all. Thank you.
I thank the USG for Economic and Social Affairs for his concluding observations. I now invite Ms. Georgiana Braga-Oriad, President, Representative of the UN Development Program in Chile, to deliver some concluding remarks.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of our Regional Director of UNEP for Latin America and the Caribbean, Michelle Moschett, who unfortunately was not able to travel to join us today, I would like to start by reiterating my gratitude to our collaborators and friends at the Government of Chile, at ECLAC and the President of the Economic and Social Council for their leadership in organizing this important conference and for being our distinguished hosts. Back in July, when Ambassador Navies requested our Regional Director for UNEP support, she appreciated being invited as a partner of choice and didn't hesitate to confirm our willingness to engage in this endeavor. Today, we are privileged witness of how during these past two days, this special ECOSOC meeting has materialized and brought to the South a relevant agenda with discussions about common challenges faced by countries worldwide in an environment of crisis and uncertainty. We have gained insights and learned valuable lessons in the field of the future of work, aiming to progress towards higher level of productivity, inclusiveness in a sustained global society. Each roundtable, the presentations by the panelists and interventions by the delegations have highlighted the multiple challenges present to advance in the development of universal agile and resilient social protection protection systems, along with the creation of decent jobs as a key transformative step with a catalytic impact on achieving the SDGs. This special meeting has provided us with a space for reflection and dialogue emphasizing the importance of cooperation, mutual learning and commitment to advance a joint agenda and to strengthen our alliances. The challenges we face are complex, but through collaboration and collective intelligence, we can develop innovative solutions and build a more equitable and sustainable future for everyone in the region. Allow me to reiterate three messages that emerged from this meeting. One, technological innovation, economic greening, demographic shifts and migration are reshaping the labor market, presenting the job creation opportunities and inequality challenges. Addressing these challenges requires effective policies focused on upscaling, job security, equitable growth and aiming to balance opportunities and mitigate risks for all workers. Technological changes, including digital transformations, are polarizing the labor market, favoring high-skilled workers while impacting on low and middle-skilled jobs. So the second message is to address this requires reforming education and training systems, implementing robust macroeconomic policies and closing the digital divide to benefit low-skill workers. The third one is to foster a more inclusive future of work. It's crucial to promote jobs that ensure workers' rights, extend social protection to all and focus on skills training, particularly for women, young people, migrants, refugees and others to build resilient labor markets. Inclusive policies and international cooperation are vital for promoting labor rights and global social protection. With these, I'd like to reinforce the thanks to Ambassador Navies for granting UNDP the opportunity to support and participate in this instrumental special meeting. Ambassador, you make it look easy, but we know it's not. And we'd like with that to thank the partnership of your mission, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of ECLAC, as well of our colleagues at ILO and UNDP Office who have made this happen. Thank you very much.
I thank the resident representative of UNDP in Chile for her statement. I will now deliver my own concluding remarks, an abridged version. A complete version will be part of the minutes of the meeting. I would like to begin by thanking His Excellency Alberto van Clavén, the Foreign Affairs Minister of Chile, for his statement, as well as the USG for Economic and Social Affairs of the United Nations, Ms. Georgiana Braga-Oriad, Representative of the UNDP. I'd like to thank them all for their statements. I am profoundly grateful for all of your participation and commitment during these two days at this special meeting of the ECOSOC on the future of work. In the Santiago metro, the Chilean artist Mario Toral painted his mural, An Homage to Poetry, in which he depicted words, images and collective dreams, flowerbeds, mountains of fire, monuments and cities. Our meeting has reminded me of these images, which show us how ideas, if they are placed at the service of creativity and solidarity, rather than dividing us, can unite us through the gift of human work. This work that gives birth to arts, nations and international cooperation. I am proud to say that this special meeting has enabled us to give a voice to the future of work. The valuable expert advice provided by the various panelists and discussants, the recommendations made by representatives of the UN system, the valuable contributions by civil society and the guidance provided by member states have all enriched our understanding about what needs to be done to address the complex transitions we are seeing in the labor market and also guaranteeing benefits for all members of our society. and also guaranteeing benefits for all members of our societies. Your participation shows a collective commitment to discuss issues that are of critical global interest in which the ECOSOC has a critical role to play to provide political guidance. Your excellencies, before I conclude, I would like publicly to place on record my thanks, in particular to ECLAC through its Executive Secretary Jose Manuel Salazar and the UNDP through its Regional Director Michel Musket, because without them, this meeting would not have been possible. I would also like to thank the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Chile, the Minister Alberto van Clavendin. I would also like sincerely to thank the ECOSOC Bureau, all member states, stakeholders, experts, and civil society who have joined us from all four corners of the world. I'd also like to thank DGACM for their work and the invaluable support provided by the ILO. Sister Sinta, thank you so much for your support, for all of your work in making this meeting possible. I would also like to mention UN Women, who have been present since the very beginning to support the convening of this meeting as well. To the various main speakers, panelists, moderators, discussants, I would like to express my profound thanks to you all. I'd also like to thank my dear team at the Chilean Mission to the United Nations in New York, Claudio Jimena, Camila, Tamil, Andrea, and so many others who have made this meeting possible, because we're talking about putting a human face on what has been done. I'd also like to thank the Foreign Affairs Ministry and the Director of Multilateral Affairs for all of their support, as well as the Protocol Division and all of the other divisions that have been part of the work that has gone into providing the facilities for the meeting. To all of you who have traveled so far to participate in this meeting, I hope that you can see how this, how important this meeting has been. I would, just before I conclude, like to quote Salvador Allende. In 1972, he stated the following: "Building a new society is no easy task. It can't be done in a few hours or a few days or even a few years, but we are traveling towards this new understanding of human existence, social coexistence, with the people's support and determination. They know how difficult our task is. Moving on the path towards democracy means greater social equality at work." Today, we can be proud that nations of the world in Chile through ECOSOC have taken up these words and forged a way forward to rethink the future of work with the patience of democracy and the understanding that the future of work has to be with justice and dignity. Thank you very much indeed. I would just like to remind participants that after the conclusion of the ECOSOC meeting, there will be a special event in this room to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and a celebration of the legacy of Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz. With that, the special meeting of the ECOSOC on the future of work towards a productive, inclusive, and sustainable global society is concluded. The meeting is adjourned.
Muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon. Please be seated. Excellent, Mr. Alberto van Clavendin, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile. Mr. Jose Manuel Salazar, the Executive Secretary of ECLAC, the ambassadors and distinguished panelists who are going to accompany us today in this special meeting, in this particular event, members of the family of Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz. My friends, my dear friends, I would like to highlight first of all three major elements that are under spin this history of Mr. Santa Cruz, the memory, legacy, and multilateralism. This comes from a concern that is common and sharing the same object of the history, that is to say, the construction of the past. But unlike this one, doesn't look to have a comprehensive understanding, but rather is governed by a different kind of regime that is trying to recover the particular experiences, the minimum and final histories, and recognizing at the same time the unique character that is irreplaceable. This ambassador, Santa Cruz, represents the defense of multilateralism, and particularly the importance of working jointly in order to have a world that is free of poverty and hunger, where the human dignity is based on the respect of human rights, the self-determination by peoples, and the elimination of inequality is something predominant. Aristotle believed that he found the location of memory deep inside the heart, and there is no doubt that the memories of Mr. Santa Cruz are concreted in this, and they had the highest academic standards. Santa Cruz was an important player in all the processes he describes in his memoirs. He described his experience first as a delegate to the United Nations and then as official of the United Nations. And he has also important concept of protection of the human dignity in the context of the post-war and the creation of the New World Order. And he also defended the idea of recognizing the human rights and the new regulation. And we are also paying today a homage to his legacy. And I have a deep gratitude to him, and I would like to thank once again ECLAC through the Executive Secretary, Mr. Salazar. This would have not been possible without his work, his contribution, and I would like to make this extended to his Grand Chief Maximiliano Alpablo and to the whole family Santa Cruz, who shared this dream with us one year ago. It is a great pleasure now to invite the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile, Mr. Van Clavendin, to pronounce a few words. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Ambassador and President of the Economic and Social Council, Mr. Executive Secretary of ECLAC, Mr. Manuel Salazar, the coordinator, the reciting coordinator of the system of the United Nations, Maria José Torres, and the members of the diplomatic corps, the ambassadors, and obviously all the delegates from the ECOSOC who are with us today. And my dear Mariano Fernández, the previous of Foreign Affairs Minister, and Rodrigo Santa Cruz, and the members of the Santa Cruz family, a family that has made a very significant contribution through different members of the family to the international relationships of Chile and the foreign policy of Chile. For me, it is actually a real pleasure to participate. participate in this ceremony of tribute, and particularly for all the importance that Hernán Santa Cruz had in a very particular period of time, very significant for the international relationships of Chile, as it was the beginning, the inception of the United Nations. It has been pointed out to the important participation he had, Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz had, particularly in initiatives related to the creation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, where he expressed the voice of Latin America. And additionally to that, and with the strength he had as a characteristic, insisted in the inclusion of the economic and social rights in this charter. And right from that moment, the concept of the invisibility starts to come out, the political and social rights, as well as the political and social and cultural rights, at a point in time where this invisibility was not accepted. And Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz had a very significant participation in the creation of ECLAC. And he was the founder, as a matter of fact, of this institution. And he used the argument that the international system and the United Nations that were coming out to light at that time needed this commission for Latin America, as it was in Europe too. And this region had a very important participation in the system of the United Nations. We should recall that we are speaking of this period of time that was previewed to decolonization, and based on the idea that Latin America had been affected by the Second World War, and that the economy of Latin America had been damaged by the contribution that Latin America had to do by providing raw materials to the allied forces. And he was able to convince the United Nations of this need to have this institution available, this ECLAC, that has been of paramount importance for the creation of the economic thoughts in Latin America. We have the hallmark of Hernán Santa Cruz in all of these endeavors. And additionally, I had the opportunity to meet Don Hernán at the time of his official retirement, although he was always very concerned about the international affairs. I remember that I was a member of a club of international affairs at the time of the dictatorship that was disguised with a different nature. And he was actually following all the current affairs with the same passion, with the same wisdom that was one of his traits. So it is a great honor for all of us to be here, participating at this ceremony, and being able to express our gratitude once again from the government of Chile and vis-à-vis of this giant character that was Mr. Santa Cruz in terms of the international affairs, and to present this re-edition of these memoirs that was launched back in the eighties with an edition that was not so elaborated or so fancy as the one that we are having in front of us today. At the same time, I think that this tribute is the culmination of a session that has been highly successful under the leading of its presidents and with the support of the team that is participating in this activity. And I think that there is no better way, best, better way to finish than with this tribute. So this is the tribute we pay, and we would like to express the affection to the family. And I would like to thank everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Minister. And I would like to invite the Executive Secretary of ECLAC, Mr. José Manuel Salazar, to pronounce the words for the opening of this event. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, dear Mr. Alberto Fanclaver, the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile, Mrs. Paula Narváez from ECOSOC, dear representatives of the members countries of ECOSOC and ECLAC, and dear family and friends of Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz, Mr. Mariano Fernández, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Chile, and Mr. Michael Maximum, Doctor in Law, a member of the Committee of Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights of the United Nations, colleagues of the United Nations assistants. My dear friends, for ECLAC and for me personally as an executive secretary, it is a great pleasure to participate with you today on this significant occasion of the re-edition of the memoirs of Hernán Santa Cruz, a work magnificently entitled Cooperate or Perish: The Dilemma of the World Community, an occasion in which we celebrate the legacy of Don Hernán accompanied by his family members. I must say that when Ambassador Narváez approached me with this initiative last year, I thought it was an excellence untimely idea. On the one hand, it was the 75th anniversary of the creation of ECLAC, on the other, the 70th anniversary of the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, both milestones in which Hernán Santa Cruz, a man of universal vocation, and precluded intelligence played a crucial role. The ideas, thought, and diagnosis contained in this testimonial work seem to me to be as valuable as today, as it was at that time. As Hernán Santa Cruz rightly points out in the presentation of book we have pre-printed today, "Since the Second World War, humanity has not experienced a situation as critical as the present one. It's facing a variety of crises that extends to all the ends of the earth," end of the quote. Forty years later, the world is still facing the same cooperate or perish dilemma. Today, in the midst of a cascade of crisis and strong economic and geopolitical tensions, as well as armed conflicts in which several countries and powers have very clear positions that they see as national security issues, there is a need for hopeful proposals and dialogues and processes that avoid the escalation of rivalries and channel the energies and efforts towards paths of peace, prosperity, and economic and social well-being. It is precisely for this reason that we value more than ever the vision of Don Hernán, the studies of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, as well as the multilateral institutional spaces of intern governmental cooperation that are responsible for managing these issues. In addition to leaving us reflections on the dilemmas of development, Hernán was capable of imagining innovative institutions for the future. And he was able to see opportunities and solutions where others only see difficulties and become paralyzed. I believe that today we should be proud to make this legacy our own, to facilitate multilateralism and to promote the implementation of existing commitments, and I agree on new solutions to new challenges. It is time to unleash the imagination and seek new approaches to bring about transformational changes, to imagine renewed institutions to be builders of a more just, productive, inclusive, and sustainable future as Santa Cruz did. And if I can conclude with a personal note, I had a chance to meet Adriana Santa Cruz as the wife of my boss at the ILO. When I joined the ILO back in 2005, we had a friendship, and I got to know a little bit about his story. But now we were commenting after holding many meetings with Rodrigo last year in connection with this project and my capability of being here. And based on this previous knowledge, part of the family Santa Cruz had this conversation with me. So it is a very good honor and pride to be part of this event and do the re-edition of this book. Thank you, Executive Secretary of the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean. And now I would like to say farewell to our Foreign Minister, who has to deal with some issues related to the Pacific Alliance, and he is indeed the host in an activity with the Peruvian Minister of Foreign Affairs. So thank you very much, Minister, for being with us here today. I would like to remind you that during the presidency of Hernán Santa Cruz in ECOSOC, the first special meeting of this UN entity was held in Santiago in February 1951. Since then, it has been 73 years, and he was our inspirer to hold and replicate this meeting today here in Santiago, Chile, because no one starts from scratch. We all rely or step upon the shoulders of others that came before us. Now I would like to show you a short video remembering that meeting and also Hernán Santa Cruz's milestones in his career. The Chilean diplomat Hernán Santa Cruz, who was an ambassador and a permanent representative in the UN between 1947 and 1952. I would now like to invite Mr. Rodrigo Santa Cruz, who is the son of Hernán Santa Cruz, who will share some remarks on behalf of the family. Madam President, Executive Secretary of ECLAC, Ex-Foreign Minister Mariano Fernández, and Minister Alberto Fanclaver, who has had to leave us, ECOSOC delegates, Diplomatic Corps, ladies and gentlemen. It is especially touching for me, the son of Hernán Santa Cruz, to participate on behalf of our family in this event sponsored by the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Chile and the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean. And we are now able to re-edit the memoirs of my father, Cooperate or Perish: The Dilemma of the World Community. My older brothers, Ivan and Cristian, have unfortunately passed away. My sister Regina has not been able to be present because of force majeure, but my other sister Adriana is here, and she is married to Juan Sumavia, who was ex-president of ECOSOC and is general director of the ILO, and ex-general director of the ILO that has actively participated in this session. This occasion and this place could not be better. We have just, it has just been 75 years since the approval of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and 75 years since the creation of ECLAC. And as mentioned by Dr. Raúl Prevej, Hernán Santa Cruz was truly the inventor, together with his, with the people working him in ECLAC, and he was very proud of that. He always came here, he always looked upon the building and said, "Well, I think I am partly the creator of all this." This tribute to Hernán Santa Cruz is held within the context of a special meeting of ECOSOC in a developing country such as Chile, that 75 years ago in 1951, when my father was president of ECOSOC. I would like to express my gratitude to President Paula Narváez for bringing ECOSOC back to our country. Thank you very much. The Universal Declaration, over the years, acquires greater prestige. In our complex times, after practically 25 years of the 21st century, the academic and political discussion is very important to acquire more respect for discussions on equality, opportunity, justice, and dignity for all human beings. As from 1948, when the declaration was approved by the UN General Assembly, my father was already aware, and the world was already aware of its importance. Years later, he wrote, "I perceived, I clearly perceived, that I was participating in a truly significant historical event, where we had reached a consensus about the supreme value of the human person, a value that is not originated in temporary powers, but in the fact that people exist, and that gives rise to the inalienable right to live without privations or oppression, and to fully develop people's personalities." And he continues to state that in the large room, and this was in Paris when the Universal Declaration was approved, there was an atmosphere of solidarity, of genuine solidarity, men and women of all attitudes that I haven't again seen in other international scenarios were present there. The Harvard professor, Dr. Mary Anne Glendon, wrote a comprehensive history of how the Universal Declaration was prepared. Of course, she highlights, and justly so, the task of Mrs. Eleanor Roosevelt as president of the UN Human Rights Commission and of the drafting committee. But she also referred to some members of this group. With regards to my father, she mentions that Hernán Santa Cruz was the strongest promoter was the strongest promoter of the inclusion of economic, social, and cultural rights within the Universal Declaration. And when she described the members of the drafting committee, she says about him, she says, "Hernán Santa Cruz of Chile is a passionate left-wing man who ensured that social and economic rights held an important place in the Declaration as political, civil, and other rights." And for our surprise, and we're very happy to say this, the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights at that time, headed by the ex-president of Chile, Michel Bachelet, launched in 2020 the Dialogues of Hernán Santa Cruz about social, economic, and cultural rights, thus confirming the key role played by my father in their incorporation into the Declaration. Now with regards to the creation of ECLAC, and this has already been said, and the words of José Manuel Salazar Cidinach, who is presently Executive Secretary, are very eloquent. Likewise, the words expressed by Dr. Raúl Prevej, who was a great Executive Secretary of ECLAC, when in the foreword of the first edition of my father's memoirs, stated that it was my father and the people that worked with him who actually invented ECLAC. My father also had an early participation in other institutions, as mentioned by Ambassador Narváez and the Executive Secretary of ECLAC. In nineteen forty-eight, in the Assembly, in the General Assembly of the United Nations, a resolution was passed to launch a program of international cooperation for economic development, which is the precursor of the present UNDP. And he was also a pioneer in having the UN getting involved in discrimination that was present in South Africa and Namibia and presided respective commissions in fifty-three and nineteen sixty-three. And was also also a former part of the Subcommittee for the Prevention of Discrimination and held the presidency of those commissions in nineteen sixty-four and nineteen sixty-five. Our family cannot but reiterate our gratitude, our family's gratitude for all those who collaborated in the re-edition of Hernán Santa Cruz's memoirs in this important event. For my father, who always had the hope of a world that is better for everyone and especially for the most needy in the world, the UN is an irreplaceable institution. For him, it would have been a true dream to imagine that more than seventy-five years later, what has been mentioned here? And what have, that we have been mentioning this and what we have remembering, accompanied by many, many countries of the world and of the UN in this present session of the ECOSOC. Once again, thank you, President Ambassador Narváez and all delegates and all UN members. A special mention has to be made of José Manuel Salazar Cidinach, Executive Secretary of ECLAC, who, together with his team, have produced a marvelous re-edition of that work. And likewise, Chile's Foreign Minister Alberto Franchlaverin, who has supported every single initiative in order to commemorate the memory of my father. I would also like to mention the people that work at ECLAC and who have participated in the re-edition of the memoirs, especially Silvia Hernández, Luis Lánzés, and Sally Shaw, and Esteban Santa Cruz, who is my cousin. Finally, I remember also my mother, Ana García de la Huerta, whose sixty-five-year marriage with my father was also always a strong support for him in all his tasks. And also our older brothers Ivan and Cristian, who admired the achievements of our father. I am also very proud to acknowledge the initiative of my son Maximiliano Santa Cruz and my nephew Pablo Víbquez Santa Cruz, in terms of awakening interest to remember their grandfather. Seventy-five years after the Declaration, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the creation of ECLAC, we are all, we all express our tremendous gratitude to them. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rodrigo Santa Cruz, for these words. I am sure that Raúl Prevej would be very proud to know that we are together here in a room that bears his name, remembering Hernán. Now, I would like to refer to our guests who have studied the life of Hernán Santa Cruz. And I would like to invite academic Mikel Mancisidor, who is president of an American university, member of the Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights of the United Nations, a doctor in the School of Diplomacy and International Relations of Geneva, who is connected online with us. Good afternoon, everyone. President of ECOSOC, Ambassador Narváez, the Executive Secretary of ECLAC, Mr. Rodrigo Santa Cruz, it is an honor to have you here in representation of the family. I would like to greet the audience and feel highly honored with this invitation to remember Mr. Hernán Santa Cruz.
Only regret I have is not being able to be present there with you. And you have a double effort in front of you, so full to organize this meeting, which is similar to the one that was held in nineteen fifty-one. And I would like to take this opportunity to remember this major diplomatic success. Mr. Santa Cruz has been fully committed and with high responsibility, showing a great vocation from the economic and social points of view, reinforcing the values of humanism that he cultivated throughout his life and explaining many of the activities he undertook. If I had to summarize some of his characteristics are democracy commitment for social justice. He was fully concerned about the poverty in the country, the relationship between democracy and the social issues in Chile and abroad. And he established also milestones in the United Nations, for example, the creation of the ECLAC, without which it would not be possible to understand the many dynamics taking place in the region. But I don't want to underscore the ideas that have already been expressed by the previous speakers. And I would like to focus on some of the characteristics of these characters that I know well during my mandate in the position. He was part of the first Council of Human Rights. And this is the committee that finally created the Universal Declaration of Human Rights with many other people who supported him in this group. Santa Cruz had a very important place. And he played a very important role in getting the right balance between the political, social, and cultural rights. Then we had the Cold War. And if we study the preparatory works that were carried out at that time, we should recognize that Santa Cruz was a leader and played an essential role in this perspective, particularly in the right to health and to education, which finally was materialized in a declaration describing concretely for the primary education, the key factors that are the core of education. And in this connection, we have the article for the right of education, which is key within the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. So all of these contributions are feeding us today all the people who work in these educational issues. He also proposed to protect the human rights that are included in the articles of this charter. I would like to speak now about an aspect that I know as rapporteur. We have the rights that have been recognized in the Article twenty-seven. And I quote, "All people have the right to participate in the cultural life in the arts of a country, as well in all the result that can be obtained from those activities." As we know, we have been working on draft for these rights. And this is the basis for the formulation of these declarations that were finally collected for the Universal Declaration and the American Declaration of Rights that was approved, adopted. And that included an article about these rights. Chile was also the protagonist in the inclusion of these rights in the Universal Declaration of the Human Rights through the active participation of Mr. Santa Cruz. And we should remember that at that time, the United Nations was constituted by fifty-one countries and the countries of the region were at a smaller scale. The formulation of these rights is based in the right to participate, the right to create at the same time. And now we have this enormous task for Santa Cruz to provide continuity to this endeavor. The Iber American community has played a significant role in the recent years to further develop these activities. For example, we have a better activity in showing the support for the culture and science as we saw in the summit in twenty eighteen. I would like to remind you, the right to science is to take advantage of the benefits for the access to knowledge as a value. Because science provides benefits for knowledge. And we should also, should consider the training for citizens that are responsible, participating in a democratic society. And this allows to would be very pleasant to hear for Mr. Santa Cruz after these many years, that people can have access to education and to understand in order to further develop the scientific knowledge. And that the right mechanisms are adopted for further development and to foster the international cooperation based on the best knowledge available.
And this has an impact today to some of the major challenges in international community. It would be very beautiful if the Latin American academics and especially Chile could continue with this task. That would be the best homage to this tremendous humanist and that great man Hernán Santa Cruz. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mikel Mancisidor, for your words. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Mariano Fernández, who has held important positions in the Chilean Ministry of Foreign Affairs as Minister of Foreign Affairs and under Secretary for Foreign Affairs. He has also represented Chile as ambassador to the UK, Spain, Italy, and in Chile's mission to the European Union. Mariano, you have the floor. Thank you very much, Ambassador, President of ECOSOC, dear Executive Secretary of ECLAC, dear Rodrigo, representing the family, delegates all, and ambassadors of ECOSOC, dear friends, relatives that accompany us today. I am truly honored of being able to express a few words this afternoon. I am the last speaker and therefore the one that finds it hardest to speak because many things have been said and so there is a high risk of repeating things. So I excuse myself in advance. To talk about Hernán Santa Cruz is an honor, commemorating his participation in the creation of ECLAC in the seventy-five years of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the first time that ECOSOC met in Chile. And when we mention the re-edition of his memoirs implies not only mentioning a marvelous diplomat, especially in the early years of the UN Development Policies, representing development policies and the aspirations of the Third World. I'm actually referring to a legendary character of the twentieth century. I never worked directly with him. I followed his steps and I got to know his significant work, his love for Chile and the respect that his personality had in all countries of the world. He came from a family with a tremendous tradition of public activity. And Hernán, as a lawyer, states in his memoirs that in his youth, he felt strongly attracted by the texts of the French Revolution and in terms of what was happening in Europe between wars. At that time, when he was interested in these issues, he launched an interesting forensic career in the fields of military justice. And he was a judge of the military courts. And he was very famous for his And he was very famous for his knowledge of political affairs. But it was in 1947 when President Gabriel Vázquez Vidal appointed him as the first representative of Chile before the recently emerged United Nations. And that is when that political tank, as he has been called by the contemporaries, started to take part in this. And he formed a fundamental part of the drafting committee of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which is the most important document in order to guide the political activities of all states in the planet so that all human beings are respected for their condition. Thus, complying with a previous tradition in the sense that this depended on how close people were to conditions of power or ethnic background. So this declaration, which dates back to 1948 and which today has tremendous value in a practical sense in order to protect the human rights from the abuses of power and the violations of their rights with a present validity that I do not need to reiterate in an assembly such as this one and that touches upon people's daily lives every day. And thus, he continued his career of rendering service to Chile but also of promoting the growth of the United Nations with a tremendous political and diplomatic intuition in terms of increasing and strengthening multilateralism as a fundamental tool for the countries that we would today call developing countries, previously known as Third World countries and even before that in the 40s and later, as the countries that once independent would become the key actors in the end of colonialism. It is very difficult to separate all these conditions, to separate this condition from his memoirs. And I truly recommend this text because it is very valid today. The memoir reflects his mission during his actions and as a diplomat to support the weakest, using the international system as a mechanism for understanding but also for the promotion of the young and poor people, the countries of the South. And in that sense, I am truly happy to be participating in this ceremony. The initiatives in which Hernán participated were countless. He worked on the idea and also on the management of those ideas. And I'll repeat that many times. Because of capital importance for Latin America was the creation of ECLAC. And there is nothing, nothing can better define its sense and its contents than the words expressed by Raul Pervich, its first Executive Secretary. And I quote, "Counter to what is often believed, I did not intervene at all in the creation of ECLAC. ECLAC was the exclusive result of him, of Hernán Santa Cruz and of the people that worked with him." And this is expressed in the introduction of the book written by and expressed by Raul Pervich. And as a school teacher said to me, "When the declaration is clear, there is no need for other comments." Another two initiatives that I followed closely, first of all, as a young diplomat in the Ong Tad III, held in Santiago in 1972, and then the World Conference on Agrarian Reform and Rural Development, held in 1979, of which he was a general secretary. And then I followed as a journalist that had become a young exiled diplomat. I was able to evidence the vigor, the energy and the creative capability of Hernán Santa Cruz. I could also mention other actions, studies and actions around social actions in poor countries, political rights and international cooperation. At the end of the day, Hernán was a great public man with an indestructible vocation, favoring also the weakest and a diplomat that combined both ideas and the actions to make them a reality. He was also very, expressed a lot of curiosity. He never looked at history with nostalgia, but rather as a source of learning and as an experience to face up to the future. His speed in order to promote new ideas is clearly reflected in his very, in his opinions about the North-South Commission presided by Billy Brandt between 1977 and 1980, one of the first international efforts of joint North-South work that also maintains a validity that makes it very interesting to once again read about that, to see how that group of people made a tremendous intellectual and political contribution in this sense. He also mentions already in his memoirs something very important, the Brazil Conference on the Environment, the first one. And that today is an issue that is discussed every day. He very quickly realized that this was a very significant issue. And to a certain extent, Hernán Santa Cruz enshrines the perfection of leadership. He suggests an idea and simultaneously is able to turn that into a reality via his actions. And that is very often a rare situation, especially in our continent. Now, when we look at his work, I automatically remember ideas and actions that I would like to share with you. But this becomes very long and a tribute cannot exceed the short words of those that we are paying homage to. I would finalize or conclude by saying that I face a contradiction, a strong contradiction with ECLAC. And I have a right to say that in this place here. Up until 1962, when we began to build this building, this was my football field. Ever since, I have memory that this was a rural area, an open area, and this is where we played football. And probably the center of that football field is on the first floor. So I express, I complain about this 60 years later. Well, I would like to end up by saying that if Hernán was to be present with us here today, he would probably be playing an active role in this meeting of the Economic and Social Council of the United Nations, as he did in 1951, organized by himself. And when we talk about the people that worked with him, I think we must remember that he had a tremendous sense of team play. He was not simply a single adventurer. He was always surrounded by a team of people that he worked closely with. Since the Congress of the Future has just come to an end here in Chile, Hernán would probably have formed part of that Congress of the Future. And I would like to end by saying that I could paraphrase Emperor Aurelius. And he would probably say that Hernán belonged to that class of human beings that follow, that do good without seeking benefits. And he does that for the enjoyment of others. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your words, Mariano Fernández. It has been truly a pleasure and a privilege to be able to pay homage to Hernán Santa Cruz within the framework of the special meeting of ECOSOC that, as I said, is inspired in the meeting that he organized in 1951. I would like to once again express all panelists, the relatives of Hernán Santa Cruz, our dear colleagues and ECOSOC delegates, and of course, ECLAC for its warm reception here now. I would like to invite all of us to invite us with this commemoration in a cocktail party at the Explanator. Thank you very much.